I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostik.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Right here.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz. Councilmember Searsy.
It is Throwback Wednesday.
You trying to get me out of here?
Councilmember Schultz, he will be very glad to hear you did that, actually, I think.
All right. On our agenda this evening, we did have one change, depending on when people looked at the agenda that was posted on the city website. We have pulled from the consent agenda the resolution providing for appointments to the 2018-2019 Youth Council, and that will be our last work session this evening to take up that resolution and consider some changes to the charter for the Youth Council. Other than that, the agenda remains the same. Looking at council meetings in the future, next week, October 30, or before that, on Monday, October 29th, we have a city council meeting on Monday at 7:30 here. We'll start with a presentation from the Emergency Preparedness Committee, Stop the Bleed Program, and our work session that night will be a continued discussion of the housing component of the draft Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. And then, we will not have a meeting on Wednesday, October 31st, on Halloween, and I hope my colleagues enjoy their treats that are at their places this evening, since we will not be meeting on Halloween. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November 7th. It will be here at 7:30. We'll tentatively start with a presentation on a subdivision application for 430 and 434 to 434 Ethan Allen Avenue. Our voting session that evening will be a second reading ordinance approving contract for LED streetlight conversion, first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 8.36, Commercial Management Districts and Authorities, first reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 11.12, permits and improvements to regulate the installation of telecommunications equipment in the city's right-of-way, a resolution providing for appointments to the 2018-2019 Youth Council, resolution providing for appointments to the Committee on the Environment, resolution providing appointments to the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs, and appointments to the Commemoration Commission, the Grants Review Committee, and appointments to the Noise Control Board. Our work session that evening is tentatively a work session on a subdivision application for 430 to 434 Ethan Allen Avenue, the First Court of Financial Reports, and a discussion of FY 2019 Budget Amendment Number Two. Then, on Wednesday, November 14th, we will have a meeting here in the auditorium, starting at 7:30. Our voting session will be the second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 8.36, the Commercial Management Districts and Authorities, the second reading ordinance amending Code 11.12, permit and improvements to regulate the installation of telecommunications equipment in city rightaways, the first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Purchasing Chapters 7.04, 7.08, and 7.12, first reading ordinance designating revenues for the Tacoma Junction Project to the city's Affordable Housing Fund, the first reading ordinance approving FY 2019 Budget Amendment Number Two, and a resolution of intent to proceed with the Tacoma Park Recreation Center land swap. Our work sessions that evening will be discussion of legislative priorities, a review of the scope of work for the public land and open space management plan, and a review of the scope of work for the parking management plan. And that is November 14th, and we will not be meeting the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And then, after that, just so people know, there'll be one other meeting, the final Wednesday of November, and then a meeting in December 5th, and that will be it for our, and then our December recess. All right. Our next item is we have adoption of a number of minutes. We have minutes from 2017, November 15th, November 29th, 2018, oh no, I'm sorry, I'm reading this wrong. We have minutes from November 15th and November 29th in 2017, and then minutes from January 10th, 2018, September 5th, 2018, the closed sessions on September 5th and September 10th, 2018. Would someone like to move adoption of the minutes?
So move.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Dibala, any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just like to thank the city manager for the special minutes that were in there for the closed session on September 5th. Thank you.
Great. And all those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we adopt minutes, thank you, to the city clerk. Now, we'll move on to public comments on voting items. Our first item this evening is a resolution regarding LED streetlight conversions. If anyone would like to speak to that, please come to the podium. Thank you, just state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Elizabeth Thompson, I just want to thank the council for their careful consideration of the streetlights, the safety experience, of course, being most important, and for thinking through how residents are affected in different places, and what their needs are, what their brightness and color experiences are. Of course, the financial impact seemed pretty extraordinarily wonderful, and then, the energy savings is super exciting in this time. You guys have a great tradition of leadership on all those fronts, and I just want to thank you for your work, and for helping us move forward. That's all.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on this voting item?
Hello, Mayor Stewart, city council members. My name is Rick Coonahan, I'm head of Energy Regulatory Affairs for Google Hardware, but I'm here tonight as a citizen of Tacoma Park, my address is 717 Kennebec, and I too want to commend you for your work on the LED streetlights. The payback is extraordinary, it's really a great thing, and I know you know that from the resolution that you have before you. I want to point out a couple of things from my experience. One is that the Empower Maryland funds that are going to defray a huge amount of the cost of this wouldn't necessarily be here next year. They probably, they might be, but we don't know for sure, and it's not just a function of PEPCO, but it's also a function of the Maryland Public Service Commission and, you know, actions they take. And I would just note that the members of the Maryland Public Service Commission have all turned over in the last two years, so it's not the same commission that originally supported Empower Maryland. So, strike while the iron is hot. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that climate change is the defining issue of our time on the environmental side, the defining environmental issue. Tacoma Park has a reputation for being a leader in this area, and the energy savings from LED streetlights are extraordinary, and if Tacoma Park leads the way, I'm sure other cities will eventually follow, and it can make a significant contribution to reducing the use of electricity, and therefore, the burning of natural gas and coal for the creation of electricity. So, we need to be a leader here in Tacoma Park. One last point that I'd make from my experience, I used to work in the, long ago, I worked in the Planning Department of Claremont, California, which is a town of about 30,000 in Southern California, and this was in the early 80s, and at the time, we were moving from mercury vapor lamps to low, high-pressure sodium lamps. And I just, I read the resolution today, what I didn't realize is we still have some mercury vapor lamps here in Tacoma Park, and that is such old technology, we have to get rid of it. But at the time, people liked the blue lights, they didn't want the orange lights, and there was a lot of resistance just because of conservatism with a little C, people didn't want change. And so, to the extent that we have citizens in Tacoma Park who are uncomfortable with the better light rendition of LEDs, people will get used to it, because now, the orange lights are what we think of as the default, no longer the blue lights. So, thank you very much, keep it up, sign that contract, get it done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, have a nice evening. Any other public comments? We also have our first reading ordinance approving the contract for LED streetlight conversion. And then, we have a consent agenda this evening that includes a resolution endorsing the FY 20 Community Development Block Grant Program, the single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of police body worn cameras and in-car camera systems, oh, and that's it, because we moved the appointments of the Youth Council. Do I have any public comments on those items in our consent agenda? Okay. Seeing no other public comments on our voting session, we will now move into our voting session, and our first item up is our resolution regarding the LED streetlight conversion. I just want to take a moment and thank all the residents who've come out tonight and come out before on this. I think our resolution at the moment, that's in our packets, is the same one we took a hand vote on last week. I think we have landed in a very good place with a very good process, and again, I just want to thank our Director of Public Works and our Sustainability Manager, Gina Mathias, for all their hard work and all the questions they've answered on this issue. And I want to thank our Committee on the Environment for their deliberation on this issue and their letter regarding our resolution this evening. So, I would just like to ask if someone would like to pass, to move this resolution?
So move.
I'll second it.
All right, I got it. Councilmember Smith, move. Councilmember Siemens, second. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes.
For Ms. Braithwaite. I looked at the information that you sent regarding the state highways, and I couldn't figure out Carroll Avenue from Flower to University, what is the current wattage?
I believe those are 100 watt high-pressure sodium on Carroll Avenue, I'll need to confirm that, but I can, I can check that with you.
And what will they be replaced with?
The proposal is to replace 100 watt with 34 watt LEDs.
All right, good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and I would like to thank Ms. Braithwaite, who actually offered to meet me again last night, and we did that, and walked around a little bit on Hickory, and Hickory Avenue, where, one of the test sites, and I just think that my experience there, which was similar to when we took the tour earlier, there are a variety of different lights, and people see them differently, but I think the shielding is a positive option, the shielded light there really struck me, as it provides more than adequate safety, but without shining into people's, into people's windows. And I did suggest earlier, which was included in the resolution, some modest changes that, around the shielding, that made sure that we would, it would be an option that we could engage on actively with the community, but also that parts of the community that maybe aren't that familiar or accustomed to contacting us would also have an opportunity to do that, and I think for a lot of people, that will solve the problem. And there have been questions, I know, about the health effects also, and the material that I read, and with the AMA study and so on, it really seems to me that in the range of 2,700 to 3,000, I haven't seen that there's health effects that I'm aware of, and so I feel comfortable with going forward on that basis as well. I think Ms. Braithwaite had mentioned that she was still waiting to hear back if there was anything connected to historic districts, and so maybe we'll have that answer before the, I hope we'll have that answer before the final vote.
Sure, I can answer a little bit to that. I've spoken with both Glenn Marcus and Rebecca, I'm blanking out her last name, of the Historic Preservation Commission staff. They will get information for the file, but they see no reason for a permit to be issued, that needs to be issued in terms of historic preservation. It's the standard replacing of fixtures that PEPCO does all the time, and so, they're keeping the information for the record, we'll have something in writing for you by the next time, but they were very comfortable as we talked with them.
I think having something in writing would be good.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to clarify something, and the council member Kovar, by voting on the resolution tonight, we are voting to move forward with the project. So, there is a two reading ordinance because of the, about the allocation of money, but I just want to make sure everybody understands that the vote tonight, if it passes, is a vote for PEPCO to go ahead and do the project.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, if I, if I implied otherwise, I just meant that since that, since the Historic Preservation Commission doesn't have an issue, I just think it's valuable for us to have it in writing, that's all.
Yeah, I just didn't want to make sure no one was confused by the two reading ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostik.
Thank you. I want to reiterate a thanks to you and to PEPCO for all of your work on this. I think it's been great to have the community involvement, and to go back and forth with questions, and it's been great to see the sample lights, and to see multiple samples, and to learn all that we've learned about LED lights. And I, as I stated previously, I think it's important to move forward for the environmental and fiscal reasons, and I think these lights will be something that creates a more consistent feel throughout the city, and I'm also excited about the conversations we've had about trying to fill in the locations where it's too dark currently, and also look at the places where it's possibly a little bit too light, and to compensate for that. I just wanted to follow up, if you could explain, I think there are some questions still out in the community about which current wattage is going to be replaced with what LED wattage, and how that breaks down.
Yeah, I sent to council this afternoon a spreadsheet that listed out existing wattages from the inventory, and then the planned LED wattage that would be, it would be replaced by. I also tried to highlight those areas by listing street names, so, in particular, those places, yeah, those places that had the brighter lights would be easily identified, and those are Hold Lane, University Boulevard are going to have, they currently have a mixture of 250 and 400 watt high-pressure sodium, so those will be the areas most brightly lit. Our proposed LED conversion is 135 watt LED. One of the reasons, one of the ways we made that conversion, we've done three different things throughout the process. Initially, PEPCO worked with the lighting manufacturer to take a look at the lighting footprint and compare the existing high-pressure sodium light footprint at various light level ranges to the proposed LED footprint, and that information's on the website that the city page has for streetlights. Based on that analysis, the recommendation from the manufacturer was that for our traditional 70 watt high-pressure sodium, which are by far the more, the majority lights in the city and are on most residential streets, that the replacement for that would be 35 watt, based on the footprint light spread of a similar nature. I think part of the issue is our lights are so old, that those 70 watt high-pressure sodium, at least in the chart, would have started at a much brighter light than what we currently experience on the street. The depreciation of light is fairly significant with high-pressure sodium over time. But that said, that was why our test lights on those three streets were 35 watt. I think the majority of responses we got back was either too bright, or it's okay, but, you know, what else is there? It really seems like more, definitely more light than the 70 watt high-pressure sodium lights produced. Another thing we've learned in this process is that even though lumen level is a measure of light, when you're comparing lumen level of an LED to lumen level of a high-pressure sodium, or an incandescent, or a mercury vapor lamp, they're not equal. Even though they have lumen levels, what you find is, because the LED has more of the color spectrum involved, the effect of that light is brighter. And so, taking that into account, we then went through the process of looking at the Illumination Engineering Society's guidelines for light levels on the street, and that's in a measurement of foot candles. When you take a look at that, they do an analysis of it, a software program, based on the arm length of the light, the pole distance, the width of the street, and they produce a calculation that says what the average foot candle light was. For those, analysis, and it's typically done for new development, not retrofit development, so, you know, we're kind of trying to fit our square peg in the round hole, but when you use that guideline, it indicated that between 24 and 35 watt would provide the adequate light at the street level. And then, I think the third part was personal experience of people doing the tour, walking, looking at the lights, and experienced the lights at night. And, you know, we had foot candle measurement readings as well, but the overall feedback we got was that a 24 watt light was the most appropriate for most residential settings. So, what we did with those measurements is we compared the lumen output of a 24 watt LED with the lumen output of a 70 watt high-pressure sodium, and it was about two-thirds less at lumen level, two-thirds less wattage level. So, we used that as the kind of analysis tool, together with the other tools we had used, to sort of decide what to do on those brighter lights. And so, with that kind of percentage reduction in wattage, we then went down the list to the brighter light that we have in the city, the 100 watt, the 150 watt, the 250, and the 400 watt high-pressure sodium. Based on our analysis of where those few high-pressure sodium, the brightest lights were, we didn't think that, we thought that was an overlit locations, and so we didn't think that light level was necessary to maintain. So, we now will have a light level ranging from 24 watt at the low end in most residential settings, to 34 watt for streets like Carroll Avenue or Eastern Avenue near the metro, areas that are now brighter lit. And then, for the state highways, I believe Carroll Avenue is also going to be 34 watt, but some of the other state roads, New Hampshire Avenue, Piney Branch, they'll be the next level light up, which I believe is 64, can't remember, watt LED, and then the brightest light will be the 135 watt LED, which will be in those few situations where bright light is necessary based on the kind of traffic patterns in the area, as well as the width of the street, as well as the commercial nature of the neighborhood that surrounds it.
Thank you. So, just to, I just wanted to ask a quick follow-up question on the chart that we have with the lights. So, Carroll Avenue and 410 are not specifically listed on the, under the 100 watt, going to 34 watt, are those, but that's where those would belong, is that right?
Yeah, I can confirm that with you, and we also have the inventory that was emailed out earlier, and so it'll list the existing wattage levels there.
Okay, and is this something that's going to be posted on the website?
Yeah, yeah, we had hoped to get it on the website today, we weren't able to do that, so it should be up tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Braithwaite. I realize now that you have learned a whole lot about, about something you never knew you wanted to know.
Oh, I've been working on this for decades.
Yes, I know, and I really appreciate the work that you have put into it, and it's been impressive how you've developed an understanding of the whole issue over the time that we've been working on it. So, I thank you for your work, and also the other staff members that have been involved in this. In particular, I'd also like to thank the mayor for herding us caps as we, as we move forward on this project. It's, as you've pointed out from your previous discussion, it's complicated, and it's not just about saving energy, but there's public safety, and there's money involved, and all that kind of stuff, so, thank everybody.
Councilmember Searsy.
Hi. Well, I just want to echo all of the kudos, because not only were you dealing with LEDs, but the world did not stop at LEDs, and we even had, I even had you responding to some of my residents about Washington gas issues over the weekend, so, you don't stop working, and I'm so grateful to have you as part of the city, and the city manager, and everyone that's been working on this, it's a good example of how everyone can kind of come together and reach compromise, and that's commendable. One question I have, so, I have quite a few places that, but, where the residential meets the commercial, right, where the residential lights meet the bright lights. And so, there are a couple of places, particularly with Holton Lane, where I am wondering how that transition will work. So, you have the residential lighting, and then you have the New Hampshire lighting, which should be, according to this document, the same as what would be Holton Lane from, say, New Hampshire, Taco Bell, that commercial district that's there, is that the proper?
Yep.
Okay, so, when we're talking about Holton Lane, we're only talking about the commercial areas of Holton.
Yep, from New Hampshire Avenue to the east.
And that would be at 135. And then, the same kind of piggybacking off of council member Smith's question about Carroll Avenue, or the state highway portion, so, that would be, remind me one more time what that wattage might be? I can look it up on my phone of what it was.
Is it on the list? My assumption is 34 watt, but I, I might be speaking.
Yeah, we may have to just double check, because I think on the list, the majority of Carroll Avenue was 70 watt high-pressure sodium.
Okay, well, if it's 70 watt, then it would be replaced with 24.
And if it were 100?
If it were 100, it would go up to the 34.
To the 34, okay, so it probably would be 34.
Yeah, interesting enough, Carroll Avenue has lights on every other pole, I was surprised to see that, and wouldn't have expected that, particularly from the junction up to University Boulevard, every other pole.
So, it would be the 34, and then, once you hit university, then you run into the 135? Okay. Perfect. Thank you, I think that's all I have.
Councilmember Kovar.
I apologize, I had missed the chart before, so I just had a couple of questions about that. So, for the group that you have listed there for the 34 watt LED, for example, on Eastern Avenue blocked by the metro, then it says in parentheses, some 250 watts, so, what's the distinction between, it says 100 on the left, 34 in the middle, and then 250 there, I'm obviously missing something.
The existing in most of the block, for that particular block, is 100 watt, but there are interspersed some 250 watt high-pressure sodium lights.
That means that, at their, now, it's two different, two different ones, okay.
What we've found in the inventory, and if you look at that inventory, it lists by street, you will find that there is a, there's a mix, it's a mixed bag of lighting levels on what should be consistent streets, and it's probably a reflection of light went down, and they replaced it, and someone may not have paid attention to what the wattage of the prior light was. There also could have been requests where we ask for brighter lights based on a specific situation.
At a given spot, or whatever, yeah. So, and then on Laurel Avenue, for example, which is right in the area where the Farmer's Market is, in addition to these lights, there are the smaller historic lights, right, so how do those things work together, if they're all on at the same time?
When they work.
Yeah, right.
When they work, it should provide, you know, those decorative lights, which are at about 12 foot, are supposed to be sort of ambiance lights, they're supposed to be kind of place-setting lights, where you sort of have a, have a look, that's just above eye level, it's supposed to distinguish that type of neighborhood, commercial area. The streetlights themselves should just be providing light for the street and the general overall lighting level, so that as you park and move, you can see, but the decorative lights are really supposed to be more of a place-setting.
But having the two types of lights there under this plan, it's the same situation in terms of the higher ones for the street, and the lower ambiance, ambiance setting lights, right? Okay, all right, thank you, thanks.
Councilwoman Dibala.
As I started to say last week, I think this is the best combination of public safety, energy savings, money savings, and reduction of all that stray light out there. So, I'm pretty satisfied with the research and the public outreach that we've, that has been done on all the different available technologies, and the showcasing of them, so people could see them for themselves. If I'm reading this chart right, the vast majority, if not all, of Ward 2 is going to be 24 watt LEDs, which should make a number of the residents that contacted me happy, because people preferred the 24 over the 25. of the residents that contacted me happy, because people preferred the 24 over the 35. I want to thank what they said. This has been a lot of really good research and showing of options. And I want to thank the Environment Committee for taking on such a difficult issue. And I want to ask one question, keying off of what Rick said and what the Committee on the Environment said in their letters. So if the next generation of technologies appears sooner rather than later, if some new information comes up that we don't know about now, does this, is there anything in this resolution that would, that would stop us from taking another look at this sooner rather than later?
I think it's always council's option to review any decision that the council has made, or that city staff have made at any point in time. It would be, it would be a council decision, or, you know, members of the Committee on the Environment, or someone else, the staff could bring it to the council and say, say, we're aware of some improvements, and we'd like to make recommendations. So it would pretty much follow the same process this did, over time.
All right. And I, for one, am going to be really happy to see that yellow light in front of my house go away. Thank you.
I like some light in my house, in front of my house, actually.
That too.
If I can just follow up on that, too. You know, when we first were discussing this project, we were talking about paying $2 million over 20 years. And the idea then of ditching it after a few years, because there's a new technology we would do, but it would be painful paying for something that's already gone. So it's really nice that this is a much more affordable thing that we can pay off relatively quickly.
I just have a quick question. At the fall conference that MML sponsored, I spoke to a rep of Amazon Web Services. They said that there is a software package available that we could control the lights. If we wanted that, do we have to get approval from Pepco to use it and go through the Politic Service Commission, or we can just go ahead and?
No, the lights are owned by Pepco, so they're their product. The poles are owned by Pepco, and the distribution lines. You're actually not allowed to get anywhere near a utility pole, or the lines, or the fixture without Pepco's permission. Pepco has indicated that they're aware, in fact, they tried out some software and were not satisfied with it. I think it's kind of the next step for them, once they make their mark in the streetlight LED technology. I think controls, we're going to just see a seismic shift in control technology for all kinds of things. Not only just individual things, so you can, you know, remotely control lighting levels, but you're going to be able to tie in your HVAC system with your lighting system, with your security, I mean, it's going to be in mesh, there's going to be, you know, interconnectedness among systems. So I think that controls is going to be, you know, what cell phones were, just not too many years ago, shortly. So controls is where it's going to be. But it would have to be a decision that Pepco would make. They would have to decide what technology they want to invest in, and then work out those arrangements with their corporate structure.
Okay. And so we would, if something came before us, we would just take it to them?
Yep, yep. Yeah, we can, you know, we pushed them on LEDs years ago. So I can imagine a similar type of conversation where we pushed to have controls.
And I just also want to echo my colleagues, and thank you for all your work on this. I remember when we first started talking about LEDs, and Flower Avenue was, I guess, the first test. So I want to say that I appreciate it, residents appreciate it. And I hope you can talk about this at the Ocean City Conference of MML, because I will use my chairman's privilege.
Bring our dog and pony and light show.
That's right. For the conference, and get you there, so that you can talk about it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cierci.
So I have moved on, in my mind, because I'm a yes, to implementation.
Yes.
And next steps. So, you know, in terms of the actual conversion, like, how long would that process take? How soon would we be able to start?
Well, my understanding from conversations we've had with Pepco is originally, they were planning a four-month installation process, and that was with a selected contractor, and I think a single or maybe two crews. So basically, working in a pretty regular, pretty steady state, but not in an intensive way. We've also been told that it would be a four to six week delivery timeframe from placement of order to arrival of lights. We've been asked to house the fixtures. So when they come, they will come to Public Works, and we will make space for them. Because this is not Pepco's standard LED fixture, they don't want to risk mixing and matching, so we're going to keep them. And their installers, since they will be working exclusively in the city, will have easy access to those lights, and it will just be the process of installation. Because we've all been waiting for the council decision, and not wanting to, you know, count chickens before they hatch, we've kind of just talked in generalities. I think, you know, after the council determines its vote, and that gets final, then we'll have some formal conversations with Pepco in terms of delivery schedules, installation. They have talked about trying to bring on multiple crews as a result of a shortened timeframe in their budget year. They've also got to work out financing, you know, the financial arrangements, as they had money in the budget through the end of 2018, but not afterwards. And it's obvious this project will roll afterward, so they have to figure that out. I'd be appreciative of all your input on, you know, I think the, we need to really capture this and let people know. We don't want to surprise anybody. So I think, together with the newsletter, and as many other avenues as that we have, I think we need to sort of capture the excitement of this, and let people know, as well as the options for shielding if they find it necessary. And so we really want to roll out a good promotional campaign, and notification campaign on the, on the city end. And so on a staff level, we will be working on that, but we hope to get comments from you, and also use your blogs and all the other various ways you have of communicating with your constituents, just to spread that information, and get the word around, so that we can really build on the momentum of this, and capture the excitement that we feel about the project.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Well, Councilwoman Cierci took my question. That was the one I was waiting to ask. So I think, seeing no other lights lit, all those in favor of the resolution authorizing the conversion of all city streetlights on wooden poles to LED fixtures, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? We're converting our streetlights. Thank you very much. This is awesome. It's really a momentous occasion. I really want to, again, echo all the thanks to the staff for this. And if you really need a place to start, like Elm Avenue, awesome. All right. We also have a first reading ordinance approving the contract for the LED streetlight conversion. Would someone like to move that? Councilmember Smith moved. Councilmember Siemens second. Any questions on the ordinance? Councilwoman Dibala? No, okay. All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Great. Next item on our voting session is the consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Councilwoman Kostick moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Cierci, second. Because there is a single reading ordinance in the consent agenda, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Aye.
Councilmember Kostick.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Cierci.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right. Now we will open it up if there are public comments on any other topics this evening. People can say them now. All right. Seeing no other public comments at this time, we will move to council comments. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes. You mentioned very briefly the proposed subdivision from, at 430 to 434 Ethan Allen Avenue. That is not the one at Jackson and Ethan Allen. I've had several comments asking me what's going on. It's something else altogether. So if you have questions, call the City Planning Department. If you have comments, talk to them or talk to me. A plug for early voting, starting Thursday.
It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. All day. Silver Spring Civic Center. Be there or be square. There was a fire at 507 Belford Place, and there, if there is a fund put together for helping the neighbors in that case, I will have the information, and it'll be on listservs. And one question on, is there, maybe if I had looked at my city manager's notes, I might know this already, is there an update on whether NDC has a plan for a county pre-submission meeting yet? Just wanted to get that out there. Thank you. I think that's it.
Great. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, it seems that there has been some vandalism of the little libraries around the city, which I was really disappointed to hear about. I know of two cases around Sherman Avenue, and it sounds like there might have been a few additional ones. So I appreciate the work of the city manager and the chief in taking a look at this. And just want to encourage anybody who might have experienced something like this on their property, to make sure you let the police know. I know a couple of people didn't think to report it to the police. So hopefully, this won't happen again, and it's just a one-time thing. I also wanted to note, and I know that Ms. Brace-Wade has, I've talked with her a couple of times, and we'll be in touch further, but I've heard from several residents about concerns regarding safety on Lincoln Avenue near Jefferson. And it's kind of a blind intersection, can be dangerous for cars pulling in and out, and for pedestrians in particular. So some ideas were tossed around regarding signage, maybe repainting the line. Hopefully, we can just continue to explore those things, and try to do something there that can improve the safety a little more. And then finally, I want to remind everyone that we're having a meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the former John Evans Andrews School at 117 Elm Avenue, to discuss general community feedback on next steps for the property, concerns the community might have about what might happen on that property, ideas about what people think they'd like to see there. There's been a lot of discussion already, and I hope we'll have some more great discussion tomorrow night. We're planning at this point on having some city staff there, a representative from the county planning, who can talk a little bit more about zoning. The Erwin Mack, who is the chair of the Property Management Committee for the property, and the Realtor are all planning on being there, as well as myself, Mayor Stewart, and Councilmember Dibala, and any of the rest of you who are interested in joining us. So I think I'm looking forward to a good meeting, and hopefully we'll have some positive discussion about what people are thinking about the property, thoughts they have or concerns, as well as learning a little more about some of the logistics and capacity of the city as well. So I hope everyone will come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Cierci.
Good evening. So reminder, tomorrow, lunch, no.
No, Friday.
Friday.
I was like tomorrow.
I'm like, oh, where am I? So Friday, lunch with the mayor at Tiffin's. So that will be at noon, and we have a number of folks that are slated to join us, so please, please, please come out. Also, it looks like the Monster Bash is still go, and I have the joy of being one of the judges again this year, and so.
Except at Tacoma Park Elementary School.
I'll make that announcement. Yes. So please, we're moving inside, but we will still have fun. Also, just as a reminder, the Crossroads Farmer's Market is still going strong, and next Wednesday, we'll have a Halloween theme. So please come out and enjoy the wonderful food and the fun activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. Two things. One, I've mentioned a number of times of late, some of the concerns about the activity of the, of Pepco and WSSC, the two utilities in North Tacoma and also the Penn area. And I wanted to thank the mayor and the city manager, and Ms. Brace-Wade, and other city staff for joining me and helping set up a meeting that we had today with representatives of both Pepco and WSSC. And we don't have all the answers to all the concerns that have been raised yet, but I think the key primary kind of takeaways from the meeting is that both of the entities did agree to improve the way they communicate with the city and with residents. And I'll, as time goes by, and we get more follow-up with and from the two, I'll try to communicate about that. But among other things, to try to ensure that we have more advance notice, not about emergencies that occur, like unexpected broken water mains, but they know what they're doing on at least a weekly or bi-weekly basis, to let us know in advance what the plans are, with the understanding that, of course, that can change. And also, some additional steps to help ensure that residents can more easily be in touch with them if they have questions or concerns. So thanks to Mayor Stewart, and Suzanne Ludo, and Darrell Brace-Wade for helping with that, and hopefully we'll get some improvements in those areas. One other thing I wanted to mention, although we're not meeting on next Wednesday, as the mayor mentioned, we do have a special Monday session on housing. And I'm going to miss that unfortunately, because I'm on personal travel then, but I'm just alerting my colleagues, I think I might send you a memo with some suggestions, so be ready for that. Just some thoughts on some additional things to include in the pot of what we're considering. Not that it's all going to be resolved on the 29th, but I just, while the ideas are fresh, I wanted to do that. So keep your eye out for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I would like to thank my colleagues for attending last week's MML meeting that was hosted here in Tacoma Park. I think it was really good. It gave us an opportunity to talk to executives that will be installing the 5G small cell technology around the county and eventually the state. So this is a huge issue for local government. It's, it's steeped in preemption, taking away our rights regarding the right of way and charging franchise fees. So I want to thank everybody for coming out. There was a police bulletin earlier about an incident on Hudson, if there's any other information.
I don't have any more information.
Okay, all right. And I want to tell those people that are watching, there will be a tenant association meeting tomorrow, hosted by Essex House Board. It will start at 7:00 PM, so please come out to that meeting. And there will be representatives from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none. I just have a couple.
On Sunday morning, I attended a meeting at Grace Episcopal Church, at which Tiffany, Tiffany Ward, who works for Mark Elridge's office, reviewed the county's racial equity report, and what work the county is doing. A lot of the materials look very similar to the materials that we have from the Government Alliance for Racial Equity. I, one of the things that I emphasized during the meeting was a hope that the county will work with the city on these efforts moving forward. And so hopefully, we will see more to come. At the moment, they just did a report, and they're looking at how, like we are, how to operationalize this work. So it's good to see the county's also getting involved with this. On November 7th, so next week, we don't have a meeting, and then the week of the 7th, I believe my colleague and I will be at the National League of Cities Conference. And so I should be able to call in for part of the meeting, but double checking that. So Councilmember Siemens will be taking over on the 7th for running the meeting. So that's it for me. I'll turn it over to the city manager for comments.
Thank you. Want to follow up on the Monster Bash. There's 100% chance of rain on Saturday, we understand. And, but who would want to stop the fun? So from 1:00 to 5:00, we'll be holding the Monster Bash at Tacoma Park Elementary School. It's a small school, but we're going to, we're going to make it work. And online, you can see how it's all going through. I've got a link in my city manager report to their schedule about the activities. But it will include an indoor parade, costume judging, and they're going to put the inflatable corn maze in the gym there.
Oh, my gosh.
So there'll be music, there'll be treats. I'll be in my outfit, hope to see everybody else in their outfits, and it should be a lot of fun.
It's an inflatable.
You have to come and see.
You have to come and do. I want to, we'll video you going through. We've got information on dockless bike share update. We kind of learned, learned a little bit by accident that the county is looking at expanding their current dockless bike share pilot to also allow for electronic bikes and scooters. They have a series of town halls coming up to receive comment on that. We would likely be involved in that. This, the town halls are more about expanding outside of the area where there have been dockless bike shares in the past, which we have participated in in the past. It does look like there is council support for us to continue. It does look like there's council support for us to continue with that. But for more information, in my manager report are the links to the three town halls that will be occurring on October 29th, 30th, and November 1st. And if people have questions, they can look online. They can also pass on their comments to us and either the deputy city manager or I can happily listen to other comments.
Real quick, did we ever hear back on their?
I thought they were doing like a survey or something?
Because I know that we did receive a lot of complaints about bikes being left in inappropriate places.
Yes, so they were, they actually brought in a contractor consultant to do an evaluation of the initial pilot and they were supposed to have a report back about a month ago. And that's how we found out about this possibility of expanding the pilot to include e-bikes and e-scooters, as I inquired earlier this week as to where that report was and if we would be privy to it. And the response that I got back did not answer that question, but it did provide information on the upcoming town halls that are gonna be held in Montgomery County. So, I have a follow-up question and about that report. I don't anticipate that there's a reason that we wouldn't see it. The data, I expect, will be very interesting, even if it's not entirely applicable because all of the, all of the bike companies except for Line Bike and Jump, I understand, have pulled out of the region.
Thank you.
But I'll, I'll share that with council as soon as I receive it.
And I just wanted to clarify, so you said that the city would take comments and pass them on to the county?
No, just if we have comments, just among ourselves, that's one thing. We really want people on this subject to directly to the county.
And we've got the information and we'll be posting that. Okay.
That's right. I want to share information, take just a moment to read something here. The, there was a meeting last Thursday about the Tacoma Junction Vision Study, which State Highway is undertaking. And we have a statement that's been approved by the administrator's office to describe that, that meeting and the study. And it is in my comments, so you'll be able to share it with your constituents. On Thursday, October 18th, several Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration staff held a kickoff planning meeting with staff of the City of Tacoma Park and of the Maryland National Capital, it doesn't say capital, there should, National Capitol Park and Planning Commission on the Tacoma Junction Vision Study. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss study goals, stakeholders, issues, needs, study boundaries, timeline, and ways to involve the community. The core geographic focus of the study is Carroll Avenue from Philadelphia to Ethan Allen slash Sycamore Avenues, but impacts on a larger area will also be considered. Goals identified for the study are to define an overall vision that works for all users, define the challenges of the intersections, and produce a report with an analysis of potential solutions. MSHA has already contracted with firms to help facilitate community outreach and involvement and is looking to use innovative approaches to hear from residents and other stakeholders. There was acknowledgement that much study has already been done in the area and that many residents and others have weighed in on those studies. While all want a fresh and holistic approach to the Tacoma Junction Vision Study, it was noted that previous work and community input to date is valuable and can be used as appropriate. MSHA staff will be refining their strategy and assembling resources for the study over the next several months and then will reconnect with the planning group on next steps. So, I'm pleased that the, that the State Highway Administrator's Office is moving forward on this study. We'll see how that moves forward. But they're very interested in having a collaborative approach with the community on looking at the issues related to the intersections.
Great. And can we start project page on the city website just for this?
That's, that's a good idea, actually.
Yeah.
We'll do that. I note that, a follow-up to Councilwoman Kovar's message about the meeting that we had with utility companies today. One, one other comment that was made by one of the reps from WSSC was to really urge people to sign up with their customer notification system online. So, if you go to the, to the WSSC website, which is, I think, WSSCwater.com, you can sign up for the customer notification system. I have done that for this area. I get my notices. And you do learn when there's a water main break and it's very useful. And so, while we'll be doing some other systematic ways of sharing information about projects and things, the customer notification system text messages, I find very, very helpful.
Just to mention, one other follow-up on that. One of the things that came up in the meeting was, well, if you get that, do you get constant messages every time a water main anywhere breaks? And what they answered was that it is possible to refine your, your area.
That's right.
It might not just be your street, but it wouldn't be Gathersburg or.
No, I just, I just get the close-in area.
Quick question and follow-up to that discussion. So, lots of the work that's on New Hampshire Avenue is nighttime utility work, second waiver issued, supposed to be, air quotes, done. Was there any discussion about, like, whether or not they're moving on? Are they really done?
We did not talk about that particular one, but I think that we, that actually, that project may come close to falling in line with kind of how these other ones are. So, maybe the same systems could be put in place for that, especially if it looks like that's gonna continue for a long time.
And we also did ask them for.
I can't remember if it's, I think it is Washington Gas.
Yeah.
The stretch in front of the.
Okay, so it's Washington Gas Project. So, well, I mean, they were not at the meeting today, but I think that the same, you know, the same kind of thing is important. And that is, what we've found is that things change by the nature of the world. And if we don't hear the, if we don't get those updates, people are just left wondering what's going on. And it's useful to hear on a periodic basis, every two weeks or so, if there's a change in the project and what to expect.
So, could we do outreach to Washington Gas as well? Just to make sure that, you know, we're sending the same message? Because everyone is here right now, from Pepco to WSSC to Washington Gas, and they're all creating havoc. So.
We'll check on that. Then I just want to put a couple announcements in from the Tacoma Park Police Department. The Community Police Academy, which a number of councilmembers have participated in, as well as many residents, will be starting up again in January. And so, there's sign up online. The Tacoma Park Police Explorers has opened up again for young people who are interested in learning more about the police department and, and. It's a very, it turns out to be an exciting program and help, very helpful for us. And the police department's also doing a winter coat drive as they do every year. So, just wanted to make this a Tacoma Park Police Night for some of their outreach efforts. I think that's it.
Councilmember Kovar, did you have a question?
All right, great. All right, then we will move on to our work session. The first work session is discussion of amendment to the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 8.36, Commercial Management Districts and Authorities.
Turn this over to our.
I think Mr. Sigmund will, will take the lead on this.
We have been joined by our city attorney.
Good evening. There's been a change to the proposed amendments. We just got through today. And essentially, the, I spoke with the executive director of the CDA and she really wanted to keep the changes as minimal as possible. And the, the one kind of absolutely necessary change to the ordinance to reflect what they want to do with the bylaws is to allow. Not, or. They want to change eligibility to be a member of the, the. I'm sorry.
The ex officio member from the city, right? Is that, they're.
Well, they, they decided they didn't want to make that change. Their. The at-large directors used to be the only directors from whom you could select the president and vice president of the board of directors. And they want that to be open to anybody on the board. So, that's the only change. And then any other changes they're making in their bylaws can, are consistent with the existing code.
If I can go back just a moment. The history of this is, obviously, that the CDMA is a creature of the city, but does function under its own bylaws as a, basically as a business association for the Tacoma Langley area. They, their bylaws have been somewhat out of date. They voted to make changes into their bylaws, but there are certain elements that they need to make consistent with our city code so that it all works correctly. We've gone back and forth a little bit with the CDA on what those changes should be. We, we'd like to stay out of the little minutia of their bylaws, just have those things that make the most sense for us going forward. And so, we did unfortunately have changes right up to the last minute today. But the actual text of this won't be before you until the 7th. So, we'll just confirm that everything is, is correct when it comes to you. But I think they're just asking for this one simple change in our ordinance and then make other changes through their bylaw process only. I know Kaylee, the executive director, was not able to be here at late minute. I think she communicated with you, Councilmember Searcy, this afternoon about that.
Yeah, yes. So, just to kind of provide a little bit more context for, for folks, for my colleagues. One of the major challenges that not only the current executive director, but also her predecessor had, was recruitment of membership to the, to the board. And so, it was not only the need to make sure that we have enough participation from the business owners and property owners in this, in the crossroads area, but also there were a number of ex officio members that included folks from Prince George's County, Montgomery County, just the, the city, lots of folks, that, that weren't participating. And so, one thought was to try to streamline things a little bit because it actually created some challenges with meeting the necessary quorums that you would need to actually vote people in, right? So, one hope is that by making some of the changes that are proposed, that it would be easier to recruit, you know, members of the board by eliminating some of the, like, the geographical differences and some of the things that just kind of make it a little challenging to bring new, bring in new, new members. So, so that's the general idea behind, I believe. Now, I, I don't know all of the back and forth in terms of the emails, but that was my general understanding of the desire of the CDA is to really try to streamline the process such that they can, they can more easily recruit members. So, I know that we talked a little bit about ensuring that the city continues to have a seat at the table. And I think one thing that's important is, you know, for us to decide whether or not that should be like a non-voting member, but you would still be on the board, which I would support, be it, you know, I currently participate in the meetings, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the ward six council member. It could be city staff and I'm open to making sure that that provision is included. I, I want to make sure that folks understand that by eliminating some of the prior ex officio members from across, you know, the various county representation and the like, does not mean that the CDA is not trying to actively meet and engage our, you know, members from, or representatives from Montgomery County, Prince George's County and the like. I think the idea is to just streamline the membership. But again, it, it shouldn't be interpreted as, oh, they're not engaging because they're, they're having plenty of meetings with, with folks in terms of the purple line, trying to get different incentives for businesses in the area. It's just not necessarily having to be beholden to holding a seat for them.
Just to clarify, they are gonna, we are gonna retain the list of potential ex officios.
They are? I thought that was deleted.
It was, until today.
Okay, all right. Because that's not what I got in my text message.
So, I, so I'm just gonna, depending on what they decide, I'd like to just give another perspective on potentially keeping some, maybe not all of the ex officios, but some of them. I do believe having representatives from Montgomery County, such as Rui and Berto Rodriguez, attend regularly the meetings keeps the crossroads area sort of in the mix on, at the county executive level. And so, I think that should just be a consideration. I understand the idea of forums and having too many people, but at the same time, requiring and having somebody from certain offices make sure that we, we at least have that person's attention as we're trying to get things done in the crossroads area. So, however that shakes out, that can just be passed on that I wouldn't want to see maybe all of the ex officios go away. So. Yeah, Councilwoman Searcy, sorry.
Can you remind us, does the Prince George's County Executive have membership on the CDA? Or is that a representative?
It was a rep. It was an, it was ex officio. And for, I mean, I haven't been to the meetings on a regular basis, but it used to be that it was just the Prince George's County rep that would always show up and not the Montgomery County one. I'm not sure how it's been in recent years.
And what about Councilwoman Tavoras? Does she send anyone?
Not to the meetings. However, the CDA has been working with her staff through the Northern Gateway Collaboration. So, so I think one thing that will be helpful to hear, because the challenge that the CDA is facing is a similar challenge that this, you know, that we face as a city, is how to best engage our counterparts at Montgomery County and Prince George's County around issues that pertain to our cross jurisdictional areas. And so, it is, is membership through the CDA or ex officio membership the way to do it? Is it something that should perhaps happen more so at a city level? You know, and not necessarily through the CDA, per se? So, I think this may raise like a larger question because the CDA, although they could extend the invitation and people will accept, they may not have a stick to require very busy people to participate in these meetings.
If I may, I would suggest reaching out to Alexander Cleaver and asking them to make sure that it's either Chief of Staff or Deputy Chief of Staff lower from the county executive's office, also Brooks, which we think will, she'll win, to have her send someone to the CDA. Because Alexander Cleaver is very close to Angela.
So, do you have all the input you need on this?
When I get the final version, maybe.
We will confer over the next week. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on now. We have a discussion of the proposed approach to council review of the tree ordinance and the tree canopy goals. And I'm gonna turn this over to my colleagues, Councilmember Kovar, DeBala, and Kostik. And first, I just want to say thank you to them for taking this on. At our meeting last January, when we were setting priorities for our work in the city, we, we thought we would try a new approach to divvying up the workload. And each of us took on one or two, though I think Councilwoman Kostik has gotten stuck on a lot of other, on a lot of other meetings. One or two of the priority issues to basically work with the staff, to think about a process and help kind of shepherd an, an issue along. And so, because trees are a big deal, we have three councilmembers who have taken this on. And tonight is our, our first time hearing back from them, a proposed approach. So, Councilmember Kovar, take it away.
So, there are three of us and there are three sections to this, and so, we're each gonna do one. And I'm just gonna talk really briefly. I think we each said we'd talk for no more than three minutes. So, if the mayor wants to have her buzzer going, we'll try to learn what it's like to do public comments. to have her buzzer going, we'll try to learn what it's like to do public comments. So, as part of the priority setting steps that we take every year, we did designate actually, actually several different areas related to trees. One was working to improve the way the tree ordinance is drafted and the way the process in tree permitting unfolds. And then the second one was to, for the first time, set tree canopy goals that we would then try to meet. We've looked at that in sort of an informal way in the past and seen how the different wards are, but we've never actually set formal goals. And the idea is to do that based on analysis of the data that's out there and that's being gathered on our behalf. And then the third part was to look at how we can take steps that would enable the, what we'll call the arborist, for better or worse, to do more engagement and outreach with the community, to help people understand how they can help improve tree health in their yard and on their property and maybe elsewhere in the community. So, it's those three things that are, three, three goals that are linked together, making some changes to the ordinance, including maybe giving some more flexibility in certain cases, ensuring that the tree canopy goals are put in place and that we take steps to begin to move forward on them, and then also to take steps to help the educational outreach component of the, of the arborist job. And just to mention a couple of points, historical points, before I pass it off to my colleague, we last amended the tree ordinance in 2011, and so, there've been plenty of change, suggested changes since then, and this is in part in response to that, that we've heard from, from residents. Also, the number of permits or of tree impact assessments and various submissions relating to tree work that the city staff has received has really gone up by a huge amount, roughly tripled from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year eighteen. So, that's something that we want to look at, why that is, but also, are there staffing aspects of this that need to change? Do we need to do something else so that people like Jan, who's our urban forest manager, to use the correct term, isn't just working all the time on, on permits? And so, with, with those three interated, interrelated goals, there are a number of stakeholders that we're gonna have to hear from, and that includes residents, those who've applied for tree protection and tree removal permits, certainly the Tree Commission and the Committee on the Environment, city staff who have the ultimate expertise on this. I'm happy that both Darby Thwait and Ken Sigmund are here, because they're among those who work most closely on it. And so, that's where, how we got to where we are. And then, my colleagues, I think next is going to be councilmember Dibala, who's gonna talk a little bit about, well, she'll tell you what she's gonna talk about, but it's the next step in the process.
So, before, before councilmember-
Can I say one other thing?
Your three minutes are up.
Oh, man, I'm glad he does it to you, too.
I do, I do that to everybody. You should see what my family thinks. But I want to say how great it was to spend time working with Casey and Cindy on this, and I'm hoping that this will be a, a nice model for these future kinds of things. We do want to make things easier for the mayor, who in the past would have been responsible for all these kinds of things. But I think it was a nice opportunity for the three of us to work together, too. So, thank you for that also. Thank you.
Yeah, we also want to make things easier for staff, and I don't know whether we've managed that on this one or not. But the first time out is always a little bumpy, and I want to acknowledge that the Chair of the Tree Commission is here as well. So, before councilmember Kostic talks about the approach to reviewing this immense topic, which is the guts of what we want to communicate to the other councilmembers and to everybody else tonight, I'm just gonna touch very quickly on two aspects, the tree canopy goal and some of the initial areas that we identified for review based on the feedback that we've received already from many people in the community. So, the tree canopy goal as an idea has been around for a couple of years, and that both the Tree Commission and the Environment Committee a couple of years ago recommended that this would, that it would be good to firmly and formally identify what the goals are for, they're implied, but to, to really set out, what are we trying to do here? And the earlier discussion and recommendations led to a desire to get the most current data for which, with which to make, make some recommendations on a tree canopy goal. And so, over the past few months, there's been a county aerial survey of the area, and that LiDAR data is now at the University of Vermont with an expert in tree canopy analyzing it, and that person will make some recommendations, hopefully, before the end of the year. And why it's important to have that is, at this point, is because if you don't have the goals, it's sort of hard to know what pieces to tweak. Is it an ordinance change? Is it a process change? Is it more education? So, they fit together very nicely as goals, and that, that's what we envision there. As far as the initial areas identified for review, in a nutshell, they relate to, turn this over, the hazardous and hardship provisions, and there's a bunch of questions that have been raised within that. When and what and how is a hazard is a hardship? How did the, how does the emergency tree fund work fit in? What about neighbor requests and so forth? We are interested in looking at appeals, when and, and what gets appealed, can be appealed. We're interested in looking at timeframes, most of, most, but not all of which, is not the ordinance proper, and we're interested in looking at fee structure and tree replacement issues. So, I'll turn it over to councilmember Kostic for a discussion of how we want to handle looking at all of this, but that's the overview of the, of two of the big pieces.
Thank you. So, based on those goals, I will discuss sort of a tentative schedule that we've proposed to move us towards being able to hopefully make some changes to the tree ordinance, as well as create those canopy goals. This information is in the agenda packet for anyone who's following along. And I want to note also that this is a tentative schedule, so I hope nobody looks at this and says, oh, look, in February, they're absolutely doing this. This is still something we're considering, and I hope we can have some discussion about it tonight. And, and even if at the end of the night, we have sort of a tentative schedule, it's still very likely that things like this are going to shift as we move along. So, what we're looking at for October, and October is almost over, so some of this may shift a little, but is having a city council work session on the proposed, proposed approach, which is what we're doing right now. Then, we anticipated having the council ask the Tree Commission and the Committee on the Environment to provide their recommendations on tree ordinance and process changes. And so, this is basically just the step of us asking them to take this on, this being something that we are interested in having their feedback on, and something we would ask them to work on over a period of a couple of months. We would also post a blog on the, a blog post on the website explaining to residents what our approach is and how to provide feedback. And during the month of October or early November, we would have staff create a, an online comment forum that residents could use to submit their thoughts on the tree ordinance, any experiences they've had, concerns they have, things they think should be improved. We've heard a lot of that already from people, but there are a lot of people who haven't shared their experiences, and we think that a comment forum could be a good way to collect all of that in a sort of standardized way that could be shared with the committees, could be shared with the council and staff, and could be reviewed more easily.
Yeah, councilmember Kostic, one of the things about that, too, I think, is that, you know, we have a lot of information on people who've gone through the process, and so, we can outreach with a link to that online comment forum to those who have applied, because sometimes you only hear from negative commenters, but we want to make sure that we reach out to people who've gone through this, both to hear negative and positive comments, but also very specific items as we look at the specifics of the, either the process or the code language.
Great. Then, moving into November or early December, have a newsletter article for residents announcing ways that they can engage with us and provide their feedback, as well as our general timeline and approach. In December, the online comment forum would close, and that, all those comments would be collated and sent to the committees and to the council for review. The city, at this point, I think, has changed a little bit. We had listed in December, the city received the tree canopy data from the county. It looks like we actually already have received that. And then, initiating the University of Vermont analysis, which we estimated from our discussions with Ms. Braithwaite, and that, that that would be about two months total. So, luckily, that sped up a little bit, so I think we'll actually hopefully have, as councilmember Dibala said, we'll probably have that information by the end of December, maybe early January. And we can maybe then shift around some of the things that we have, since our February goals here are pretty lofty to have a lot of different things in February. Some of that could possibly be shifted up to January, based on receiving that analysis sooner. What we were anticipating for February was receiving the University of Vermont data analysis, having a joint work session with the city council and the committees on the University of Vermont tree canopy data, to discuss that and talk about goals. Possibly an open house focused on the University of Vermont tree canopy work, as well as, we could combine that potentially with tree ordinance discussions, or it could be focused more on tree canopy. That's something we could kind of determine as things go along. And the Tree Commission and Committee on the Environment would begin to review and develop recommended tree canopy goals. Again, this could be moved up probably to January or late December when, when we receive the canopy goals, the canopy data. We were also looking at a, probably a February date for receiving from the committees their recommendations on the tree ordinance changes, and then having a work session, an initial work session for the council to discuss the tree ordinance changes and any proposed education or outreach efforts. And then, moving into March, looking at having an additional council work session on the tree ordinance and canopy goals, and hopefully, by the end of the month, the target date for voting on it changes to the tree ordinance. And then, based on the timing of the tree canopy goals, we were anticipating that that work might be slightly, happen a little, a little bit later after the tree ordinance work. So, in April, we had the committees finalize their recommended, recommended tree canopy goals and presenting to the council, and in May, the council voting to adopt tree canopy goals. So, that's kind of our basic overview of what we were thinking would be a process we could follow. Like I said, it could obviously shift around, and we're interested in feedback from the rest of the council on your thoughts in terms of that timeline and things we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cleaver, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just mention one other thing. I think that was a great explanation of the timetable, but I would emphasize, it's not so much that it has to happen in February or March. That's the order or sequence of the things. And kind of the reason we went with, we had gone with April was because if we can work out the tree canopy goal by then, then conceivably, we could find a way to work it into the budget. Now, by then, the budget's already mostly set, but at least we were, you know, imagining some world where that might be true. But, but the key is, it's more the sequence than that that each month is mandatory in some way. I think, I think that's the only other point I wanted to say, so.
And to emphasize a question that I've already, I've already had several times already from residents, there'll be several opportunities for public input in different forms, online comment forum, an open house or something similar when we get further down the, down the line here, and of course, public comment period during the time when we're considering any ordinance changes.
Great. And I, maybe just adding to that, too, thinking about, most of our, I feel like, street festival folkfest is in the fall, but if there are any events in the, in the spring, I mean, May will be a little late for Celebrate Tacoma, but there's Arbor Day. Oh, yeah. We could do something really fun with Arbor Day.
It's usually what, like April twenty-second, somewhere, or somewhere, it's mid-April sometime.
That'd be cool. I should keep that in mind. Councilmember Smith?
First, I would like to thank my colleagues for taking this on. We've talked about the tree ordinance for a number of years and the tree canopy, and so, it's, it's good to see that we are gonna at least consider some changes. Couple of questions I have. Wards, it looks like four and six have, I guess, historically had a problem with their tree canopy. Last time, we did an analysis, and I, I would assume that these wards popped up again. Was there any type of strategy put in place to try to, you know, fix this issue?
This is the result of the analysis from the last time.
Okay. And so, we haven't done anything before then to look at?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
And since there was no adaption of, formal adoption of tree canopy goals, there was not a lot of adjustment to the program to accommodate that.
Okay.
But you are absolutely right, that a couple of wards have come out under, in some of that's parking lots, but even so, there's definitely ward differences in, in how tree canopy is distributed.
Although my recollection was maybe city manager, city manager or public works director could correct me, but I thought we did approve some funds for Ward Four specifically, or councilmember Siemens is nodding, I think, too. As I recall, after we saw this data, we did like a one-time approval of funds.
For street trees, yes, along Maple Avenue.
Yeah. And that didn't take a huge bite out of the percentages in any way, but that was, as far as the strategy goes, I think that okay.
We have a number of large buildings and large parking lots in Ward Four.
Just want to piggyback on, the same is true for Ward Six. So, there were new trees that were planted along Wildwood Drive and some other areas of Ward Six, street trees along sidewalks, but again, we have a huge portion of our ward that is commercial parking lots.
And I, I guess I want to, to piggyback on this, a couple of things that I'd be very interested in as we go through this, but just recently, there was a study done, you know, focused on DC, but it showed that poorer neighborhoods had fewer trees. And, and that's a real health disparity and quality of life disparity. So, it is something that we, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we're paying attention to. That said, lots of people don't want to afford the maintenance of trees, and so, that'll be part of the discussion that comes. And also, I just, April twenty-sixth is Arbor Day, so.
I would like to say that I support the ideas here to, to get the information out, the public meetings, newsletter, and making sure that we consult with the Tree Commission. I think that's, and the Committee on the Environment. I think that's a great way to go. I would add that it, it would be nice if we could do maybe a Facebook Live session with you guys, so you could maybe take some questions from residents. That's something we can archive. I think, Peter, you would be great.
And it is.
Yes, yes.
We're doing the housing, it's Ask Moses and-
And I think, I think that's it, and thank you again.
Building on what councilmember Smith said, I know that our deputy city manager just recently met with someone from GARE, the Government Alliance for Racial Equity. She's our coordinator, or?
She's the east, northeastern regional manager, I think, is her title.
Northeastern Regional Manager. And be, because we're at the beginning of this process, I'm wondering if this may be an opportunity for us to use some of the GARE tools and the framework that they lay out, to see how we can weave that into this process, and actually kind of use some of the tools that they provide, because we're at the beginning, and see perhaps maybe if GARE would offer some technical assistance to us in that process.
Something like a nap.
Yeah, it might, I mean, it's a tangible, right? It's a tangible project that we have, and we're at the beginning of it, and so, this might be a way to take some of those worksheets even and just see how easy it is to apply, you know, is it the four or five basic questions that they say you should walk through on each of these things and see how that works, and maybe we can get some assistance from them. Councilmember Sears.
Thank you all again for, for working on this. It was really helpful to read through, and I-
It was really helpful to read through, and I could tell that there's so much thought put into the various aspects of the project that, you know, in order to get us to the point where we're ready to establish the goals. In terms of the online comment form and what we hope to gather, is it, one, we may want to consider pushing it until after the holidays. That's like having something, right now, we're almost in November, by the time you get it vetted and up, you're talking about having something for people to comment on during Thanksgiving, and then the holidays is usually not the best time to ask anyone anything. So you may want to just consider kind of flipping the order and maybe, you know, thinking through like what the LiDAR data tells you if it's available now, and then maybe some of the comments that you solicit may be kind of tailored based on some of that data. And I also wonder if, you know, again, kind of taking that racial equity lens, you know, if if the goal is to get comments from people who have engaged in this process of, you know, either having to remove a tree or having to do some sort of mitigation, then you're automatically limiting your comments to those who are property owners. And so again, given that we're highlighting, you know, Ward Four that has a lot of renters or segments of Ward Six that have a lot of concrete or typically apartment dwellers, you may want to think about ways in which we can solicit feedback from those residents who aren't aren't homeowners but would appreciate more open space or more green space. And just trying to think through ways in which we could try to to get that from folks. I think the the only other thought that I had, in addition to trying to get feedback from the residents in those rental communities, but how do you really tap into the commercial aspects of this? Because we just talked about the CDA, like the vast majority of the Crossroads area is, you know, privately held commercial property. And so although the city right away is, it's, you know, where we could put trees, like in reality, you may want to think about things like pocket parks or other places on commercial property where we could actually have more trees, have a little bit more green space, but it's not in the city right away. And also the impact of things like the Purple Line and whether or not we could leverage that develop or that process to help further the goal. It may blow up your timeline, but it may also be another way to add more green space, but, you know, through something like the Purple Line construction is a way to add more trees in in certain areas.
And to and to follow up on that, I mean, we've already discussed with a lot of our economic development goals, that when we do the, when we hopefully retrofit strip shopping malls, et cetera, that that we meet a variety of environmental standards. And so that may be part of the canopy goal, is that to show that that feeds into that and helps us, when we're sitting down with a developer, really push for, you know, these kinds of assets in their development plan.
Councilmember Koval and DeBala, did you?
Well, I was I was just gonna say something similar, which is, we don't have to do it, but identifying it as a policy tool, adopting it as a policy tool, that that would be something we'd want to do, would be the goal in the in the short run.
Yeah.
So I love those ideas.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just, I'm just cognizant of the fact that for some areas of the city where there's a lower number of, you know, where lower, it it's not necessarily because people don't have trees on their property, you know. It's either you make the homeowners live in in a complete forest, or we come up with novel ways to add more trees to some of these commercial areas that currently don't have them.
Councilmember Costa, yeah?
Sorry, did you have something? I was just gonna ask, actually, if Ms. Braithwaite wouldn't mind answering, related to the canopy goals or the canopy work that the University of Vermont is going to do, will they be looking at those sorts of questions in terms of the distribution of commercial properties or or even the distribution of, say, parkland, parkland that is going to naturally have more trees? If Ward Six doesn't have a lot of that land, for example, and Ward Three does, then we're naturally going to have more trees than Ward Six does. So is is some of that going to be figured in, or is that a component of it?
They do, it is GIS-based analysis, so they will have property records, a layer of property records. I'll need to confer with the person that we have doing the study to see, I mean, my understanding is it was going to be more related to identifying percentage of trees and and height of trees to get age of trees and locations. I don't know whether or not they were intending to analyze canopy based on property type, but I can find out if that is an aspect of it that we could ask them to to tease out of the numbers and provide.
Yeah, it seems like it might be useful. And then at the end of that analysis, will that be primarily just the figures, or is that going to provide us with some of the recommendations in terms of how we can address it? Or is that more on us to determine?
It's gonna be primarily the figures and sort of the general, general guidance of the industry, industry used loosely in terms of canopy around the country, canopy in similar type cities, canopy of similar jurisdictions. So we'll have some comparative information. I don't think the the evaluator will, he may have some comments about percentage growth and what's reasonable and how fast you can reach certain levels based on where you are. But I think the determination of the the actual goal will will be really city-led based with some informed information from the from the analysis.
Great. And I particularly liked Councilmember Cierci's suggestion of making sure that we reach out to multifamily buildings as well. And I know that's one of the things that we listed in our our review area, but it's true that we're not gonna get information and and feedback from those people just by putting out a comment forum to people who've had experience with the tree canopy. So do you think it would be possible to have some sort of outreach with staff to specifically contact some of those residents? Or do you have recommendations about how we could go about that?
I think it, I think it's really going to be led by the kinds of questions you want answered, the input that you want. So I'd I'd be very interested as we get just a little bit more into it to find out kind, what what is the impact, input that we want from them, the answers that we want from them? Because that may identify the kind of way we ask. We do have quite a lot of outreach right now into the various apartment buildings, and I don't know that we add this to the list, but if it's the appropriate kind of question, I'm happy to, because we have folks going out there. If it's if it's better to do it in more focus group ways or in some other ways where we gather, we gather in a parking lot someplace outside of an apartment building to talk about it, you know, with kids or a variety, I mean, depending on kind of what it is we're trying to get, it may, it may help lead us to the right way to approach it. Open to lots of suggestions on it, but I, but until I see the kind of questions, I'm not figuring it out in my mind how the best way might be to follow up.
We, in terms of the comment forum, we were really envisioning something very open-ended and more or less just a call for people to share their feedback. And we can, we can change that, it can be more specific, but our our initial vision was that it was sort of a couple of logistical questions in terms of have you, have you participated in the tree, the tree process formally with the city before, what ward do you live in, and sort of what are your, what are your thoughts? We could make that a little more specific if it seems like that would be beneficial.
I think it would not get answered. I think that that would be too general to to get answered. I will say that one of the things when we first started doing the resident survey, the that we didn't, one of the early questions on the resident survey is always, you know, what what do you like about Tacoma Park? And we didn't have trees on it as a as a checkoff thing, and everybody wrote in trees. So then from then on, we put trees, and we're like, well, yeah, we should have put trees. But that also, you know, there may be something in our in our resident survey that can get to some of that that isn't a separate survey. So I'm not ruling out any of those, but, you know, I I personally wouldn't answer that survey. And so I'm just trying to imagine, unless it was asking me for a particular reason and I saw kind of the point of it. So I think how it's worded may make a difference. You may have a couple of different surveys based on different target audiences.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the the main comments that I've heard from people who live in multifamily buildings are that in some situations, the property owner cut down the trees and then wasn't motivated to plant them again. And so then they lost that shade cover on the tree, and there was just no way for them, the residents living there wanted trees, but there was no way for them to leverage that and get a tree on their property. So, I mean, that to me seems like something we need to consider as we look at ways of encouraging them to do that. So it would be helpful to get those sort of comments.
Good. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate all the work that my colleagues are putting into this. It's, you know, one of the, as you said, from the surveys, one of the real characteristics of Tacoma Park, that we do have our our tree canopy and tree-lined streets. As some of you may remember from my years here on the council, a concern that I've had since I joined the council is the work that Pepco is doing and trimming the trees along our streets. One of the things that is a result of that is that they may not trim the, they may only trim the the trees that are near the power lines, but the trimming that they do radically affects the tree and damages the tree to the point where in a few years, those trees die, many of those trees die. And I give as an example, you know, we had trees across the street from the library that were, some of the first trees were radically trimmed by Pepco, and they're no longer there. They had, we had to take them down. And that raises a different question, which is, you know, should we have to pay to take those trees down when they kill them by the way they trim them? Leave that for another discussion. But I would be interested, and I don't know if there's a way of doing this, for us to evaluate the percentage of our tree canopy that is gonna be lost by this tree trimming that goes on? Because that puts a bigger burden on the the residents to maintain a healthy tree canopy. And it also is radically changing the character of the city itself.
And I'll just follow up on that. I, you know, certainly that'll be something that gets looked at, but one of the, one of the big issues is where do you plant trees? And if you have power lines along in the right-of-way, it's just not really appropriate for us to plant trees there.
I begged to differ. I mean, it's not appropriate because of the current way that the power companies are trimming trees.
I understand that.
That's a, that's an opinion that has changed through the years.
Okay. But still, trying to get really large trees in areas underneath power lines has been is has been problematic. So one of the things that has been proposed numerous times is that then, instead of us planting street trees, that we actually plant trees on people's property so that it's within the yard as opposed to right within the right-of-way. And so, and of course, that's money, that's maintenance, and that's an issue that we will take up. But I do want to make sure that it's just kind of on the record that one option, too, is to not necessarily just spend city money on city property. And and how we do that, that's not to say we don't look at the regulations and and how we work with the utilities, but also just if we're trying to meet certain goals, there may be some different approaches that we could take.
And I would be interested in hearing the the legal advice on our ability to do that.
Well, we do it. But yeah, it's fine.
One issue with Pepco.
One problem with Pepco is several years ago, when there were so many power outages, the state government mandated, it's called vegetation, vegetation management requirements. And so it's essentially requiring Pepco to to keep its lines clear. So that's why their practices have changed.
And it's more complicated than that because also the arborist training has changed considerably during that period of time or prior to that period of time, which was supported, let's just say that that I think the power companies had a great deal to do with those changes and attitudes about trees.
All right. Any other comments or questions regarding the process, Councilmember Koval?
I just wanted to add a response to a couple of the issues that Councilmember Cierci made earlier, which I think were really important. In the racial equity considerations that were mentioned here, there's an effort to kind of get into the point that it's important to engage with the with the whole community. So I think there was initial steps in that direction, but maybe it wasn't that explicit in terms of the gathering of information. And so I would say two things on the timing. I certainly understand your point. If we can figure out what goes into the survey, why not start it when we plan to start it, but just have it go past the holidays so that we're not limiting it, we're not waiting, but we're not stopping it? Because I agree that when people are busy with this tree and putting decorations on it, they might not think about the rest of the stuff. But we could start it and just let it continue on into next year. But maybe the survey should also include in some way something about the canopy goals too. The average person maybe hasn't thought about canopy goals, but maybe there's a way to factor that into, so that you can, in the online comment forum, whatever that's gonna end up looking like, not only do you have to talk about your experience with the ordinance, but would you like there to be more trees or fewer trees? And so, because the things, the two are linked. And I think in terms of the racial equity and the outside organization, I mean, if there's a way to explore this, is are areas without trees, is land there less expensive? And so people, less money, more likely to move there? Or is it areas where people from communities that, for whatever reason, haven't been part of the the leadership of the community are invested in less and therefore end up with less trees? I don't even know how that works, but if we could help understand the history of that, maybe through the outside organization that council, that the deputy city manager mentioned, that would be an important thing to understand. We want to invest in the underserved wards, but I I wonder what's the history of how that happened? Is it just that there are big parking lots there, or is there more to it than that? I don't know if it's possible to figure that out.
The other thing I'm wondering is also, and this is just a note to come back to and consider, is is there anyone from at the county level or parks that we should include in this conversation? I'm just thinking of where can we plant more trees? We have our own city parks, there may be opportunities there, but please don't plant them on the Spring Park field again, because I will hear about it from the soccer players. But there, we have a lot of county parks in the city, and so there may be, I don't know, there are opportunities to think about partnerships. And the reason I thought about this actually is the terrific partnership over in Hillwood Manor between the residents there and the garden over there. And so maybe building on that precedent, we might have some opportunities. So I would just build into here as we're thinking about this, connecting with some some folks at the Parks and County level. Cool. Councilmember Siemens, do you have more to say?
I did not.
All right. Well, Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, when is the deadline for the November newsletter? Did it happen already?
It probably happened.
I think it's, yeah, pretty close if it's not already. I, I, okay, I think, I think it's probably too soon to have something for for the November.
All right. So what do we think in next steps? Looks like we gave some good feedback on process and, sorry, I'm eating a pretzel.
They're delicious.
Really.
Pretzels tonight, it's awesome.
Realizing I'm done here. And I'm happy to work with each of you, and we'll work with the city staff to then fill out this process a little bit more and start scheduling the meetings we need to. Is that something a good next step? And then hopefully, maybe, maybe GARE can give us some assistance. That would be exciting. Cool. All right. That's it for this. Our next work session is a discussion of our ordinance regulating cell antenna in the right-of-way. I'm gonna turn this over to our... I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney and see if he can make sense of it.
Okay. So generally, the regulation of installing cell antennas is a zoning issue covered by the Montgomery County Zoning Ordinance. However, the city has the authority to regulate the installation of antennas in its right-of-way. So that's the purpose of the draft code amendments that are before you. The city's authority, however, is constrained by federal law. The Telecommunications Act of 1996 prohibits state and local laws that interfere with the deployment of wireless facilities. And the FCC, recent, the Federal Communications Commission recently issued an order interpreting the restriction on local authority very broadly. The, the order limits the fees the city can charge for permit applications and for kind of renting space in the right-of-way. It requires that regulations that apply to wireless companies also apply to other telecommunications companies. And it limits the aesthetic requirements that we can impose. Says they have to be reasonable, no more burdensome than those applied to other infrastructure deployments and published in advance. And it also sets time limits for the city to consider permit applications. The proposed amendments are intended to give the city the, you know, the most possible influence or control over the installation of antennas in the right-of-way without running afoul of federal law and risking a lawsuit by either wireless carrier or one of the companies that installs the infrastructure. You know, it's, I mean, the fact that we're, you know, working on ordinance to permit these installations shouldn't be, you know, considered a, kind of a policy decision that we want to pave the way for these installations. Reality is, the federal law is paving the way for these installations and we're, you know, trying to exert the limited authority that we have. Now, the, there, the county is looking at zoning text amendment that would apply in the county right-of-way. And a lot of what I'm doing is intended to mirror that to the extent possible. And I think that gives us a few advantages. One is that, you know, when people, when people apply for a permit in the city, you know, our requirements don't kind of come out of left field. They're going to know generally what the parameters are. And two, I think it reduces the likelihood that somebody will sue us rather than the county. Now, one big difference between the county as a whole and Tacoma Park is that we have above-ground utilities throughout the city. We also do not have many of our own, like poles, infrastructure that we own in the right-of-way that the people might want to attach to. My understanding is that the streetlights that we have, for example, are, are too small to support the facilities. And from, just from my, my understanding of the facts, and I'm no expert, but I believe that it's actually kind of aesthetically preferable to have utility poles that these can be mounted on because it kind of gets most of the equipment up out of eyesight. Big concern in the county is what they're doing in neighborhoods with underground utilities and short streetlights. When they start mounting all the equipment on those lights, it's a lot more noticeable. So what I've tried to do in this ordinance is first mandate that that you obtain a city permit before installing new antennas, which can be attached to an existing structure, or installing new support structures, which typically would be a metal pole. It requires that existing utility poles be used whenever possible. Each antenna's support structure has to be designed to hold multiple antennas. Each carrier will have their own antenna. You can see the big ones mounted, there's kind of a ring of antennas around the pole. I mean, this is what we're trying to require on a, on a smaller scale. It limits the size of the equipment boxes associated with the antennas. They, sometimes they're on the ground, sometimes they're mounted on the pole, but they hold like the electrical apparatus, things like that. It requires that new poles be treated so they, you know, conform with or blend into the surroundings. It requires that antennas in historic districts be shrouded. Shrouding is just a kind of low-profile, low-visibility covers that are available for these antennas. And consistent with what had been the proposed zoning text amendment, and I think the county councils may be wavering on this, it requires that antennas be at least 30 feet from homes in residential districts and at least 10 feet from businesses and commercial and mixed commercial and residential zones. I mentioned there's a time limit for ruling on permits. I did not put that in the ordinance because it's not, it's not up to us. And, you know, it'll be, it'll be something we have to comply with and it'll be in regulations. It's 60 days for review of a antenna attachment application and 90 days for review of a new structure application. And that is supposed to cover like the entire period from, or the entire application process from start to finish. And similarly, similarly, the fees are not in the ordinance, but we can put those in regulations. And, you know, the, the hope is maybe the shot, the shot clock, maybe the fees limitations are challenged and they change. But currently, the attachment installation application fee is limited to $500 for one to five antennas, $100 for each additional antenna, and $1,000 for new pole installation applications. And the, the recurring rent that we can charge for use of the right-of-way is $270 per facility per year. So those are the basics of the ordinance and I'm happy to answer questions.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Ken, thank you for working on this. This is a very important issue. It's not just about cell technology. I think boils down to preemption. But I have a couple of questions for you. The fee that we get for new poles, is that also include replacing an existing pole? Or is that a real new pole that $1,000?
That would be a replacement pole as well.
Okay. And the $270 rent, does that go to the city or does that go to Pepco?
That would go to the city. If, again, we don't really have facilities or structures that they could attach to, but that would be the total that we could charge. If they were attaching to a city light pole in the city right-of-way, we could charge $270. But we can charge them $270 if they're attaching to a Pepco pole.
Now, the county is talking about conditional use. How does that apply to us, making, you know, the industry go through conditional use to put up the poles or the facilities?
It, I mean, it applies, it does not apply to our right-of-way. It applies to, and I don't know if it's realistic to expect there will be applications like that in the city, but it would, it would apply on private property installations. The, the zoning text amendment, the conditional use distinction is primarily based on installations on the shorter light poles, I think 20, less than 22 feet. So because we, we only have the taller utility poles here, we don't, we don't have, I mean, I mean, nowhere in, in the proposal have, have, or does the city, would we require that there be a public hearing on a conditional use? And frankly, I don't think it's, it's feasible to have a hearing and meet the, meet the shot clock requirement. But, but that conditional use primarily applies in residential neighborhoods with short utility poles. Or I'm sorry, short light poles.
And can you walk us through what would happen if the shot clock runs out? It's our fault. Does that immediately, is there a lawsuit brought against us or do they?
I'm sorry.
Don't they just get to go ahead and do what they want to do?
No, it's actually not, that would be what they call deemed granted. It's, it's that they would, they could sue us.
Oh, okay.
All right. And last week, we learned that it's not just putting up the pole infrastructure, that Crown Castle and its competitors are actually going to have to dig into the right-of-way to connect all these facilities. Can you remind us if our ordinance, would it cover that? Does it require them to make sure if they dig up anything that they replace it in the same condition or if not better?
Yes, that, that is, that's actually required now and, and the practice now.
Okay. All right. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Right. Councilmember Cersei?
Thank you so much. I'm still trying, first I felt like I needed a PhD in LEDs and now we're moving on to, to these, to the, 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 these poles. What is it? Cell towers. Lord. So one thing that I'm still struggling to understand, because at the meeting, there was a distinction made for municipalities amongst those municipalities that actually owned their utility poles versus those that do not. So in terms of like our, where our regulatory authority, in terms of like requiring someone to submit something to, you know, the city to allow for permission, if, let's say Crown Castle, let's say they had a client. Let's pick on one of the plazas in my ward. They, they want to upgrade. They have poles, Pepco poles. They've talked to Crown Castle and they, they want to install these cell towers on some of the poles. Like, is it because the poles are in the city of Tacoma Park that they have to go through the city of Tacoma Park? Or is it because it's actually on, I don't know if I'm making sense. Like, is the Pepco, because we don't own the pole, do they go to the county first? Or do they come to us because the pole is actually in the city limits? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. The, the, the issue is whether it's in the city right-of-way.
Okay.
If it's in the city right-of-way, I mean, they would need to get a permit from us. Part of the permit requirement would be that they have what's called an attachment agreement with Pepco, demonstrating that they have, you know, permission from Pepco to use their pole.
Okay, okay. So, so they would still, regardless of who owns the pole, if they are operating within the city limits in the city right-of-way, they would come to us first and not like Montgomery County or someone else?
Right.
Okay.
Right. But let me just follow up on that. But if they're on private property within the city limits, then it's just under the county ZTA?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So that's the difference. The difference is whether it's in the right-of-way or it's on private property.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So if it's in the right, if it's in the city right-of-way, the county ZTA does not apply or applies in addition?
It does not.
It does not apply.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I, my brain, it's late, it's 9:30. Okay. So we are only able to enforce any, any small cells that are installed or they want to install within the city right-of-way? If it is outside of the city right-of-way, then they automatically go to the county?
That's right. And so, and I will defer again to the city attorney, but if indeed there is a provision under the county ZTA that there's a conditional, you have to get a conditional approval, then we can weigh in on that.
Okay.
So as we, as we do with many development items. So that's, if it's, if it's a as-of-right action by the county, we can't. But if there's some, if there is a judgmental role, then we can weigh in on that part.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And Councilmember Kostick?
Thank you for this. I have a bunch of questions. A lot of them were answered regarding the county versus the city already. So just to be clear, anyone who, any of the companies that wanted to put this in, they would not apply through the county and go through the tower committee that we heard them talk about at the MML? They would apply to us and they would go through our process here. Is that right?
One thing I have not been able to nail down yet is the extent that the tower committee process would apply in the city. It may be just that it would apply to, to larger, like, insulated, or towers that are too big for the right-of-way. So on, you know, likely on private property. But I haven't quite nailed down how the tower committee would fit into this.
Okay. If there's a way to figure that out as we move forward, I think that would be helpful. And then in terms of, and I looked through the proposed ordinance here and I have a couple of questions about that, but I didn't have anything immediately jump out at me regarding notification to residents if there's a proposal for this. Is there a required period or a required notification of residents written into this?
There is not.
Is that something we could consider or something? Does the county have anything in their?
Certainly, we can, that's something that we can require. You know, what, how much, you know, what we'll be able to do, you know, based on feedback is going to be very limited, but certainly we can require notice.
I think it'd be good to explore adding some notification language in there. This is kind of pie in the sky, but if they are replacing poles, it makes me wonder if there are opportunities to look at getting them to take down some of the existing unused wires, which I know is probably not possible. But if it were possible and we could write it into this ordinance, that would be fantastic. Really pie in the sky, if they're replacing poles, could they consider undergrounding some of this at the same time? That would be awesome. But focusing more on the wires, I, realizing they probably are not going to be replacing every single pole, that might not be possible, but I don't know if you have any thoughts on whether that could happen.
I would, I would like to, I would like to explore any language we can put in related to consolidation of wires, moving of wires, getting rid of double poles, where there's leftover double poles, those kinds of things. So, to the extent that that is appropriate here or in some other part of our ordinance, uh, it's something that we've been advocating a lot in many different respects. So, i- if it seems appropriate, I would love to see that.
So, so I I did put something in there mandating that they, that they remove the old wires and remove the old pole. Um, what, and I actually, um, this is in the, the, the county's ETA as well, and what I, you know, I I was actually watching the hearing a couple of weeks ago and um, attorney was saying, you know, we figured out we can do this. I don't quite understand how it works because kind of the fundamental problem is uh, you've got these other entities that have their wires on the pole, and the hard thing is getting them to come out and make the switch. So, you know, I I need to, it's in the ordinance, I need to figure out really how it's, how it's going to work.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
And actually, on the underground, I just wanted to ask, we, because we didn't know until the MML meeting, I think, that they're, they are gonna have to do what they called open trenching. So, I actually think if they're already.
That was my thought too. They're gonna be digging it up. Can they just dig it up?
Doing open trenching, does it make sense to have them explore putting some of the wires underground?
Um, I mean, it's uh, the kind of the, the requirements are kind of like the fees that, you know, if the costs add up, it can be considered, um, you know, interfering with the deployment. So, I I, to the ex, I mean, I'm not sure we could require the wireless companies doing the trenching to to move other people's wires underground.
Right, I I don't know where I'm getting this from, but I thought one of the reasons why there are so many random wires around is because of an issue of ownership, like you can only touch your wire. So, I I wouldn't expect, um, you know, for Crown Castle or whomever to be able to touch Pepco wires, so.
And I, I mean, I think the question about undergrounding is a different kind of a technical question. Um, and my understanding about the open trenching was not for the actual wires for that purpose, but for a different purpose. And so, I think that's a technical question we'll need to get an answer to.
Yeah, I believe the the undergrounding was to link the nodes on a.
That was, that was my understanding. I, you know, I think though, that anytime you're doing trenching, I mean, we're talking tree issues, we're talking a lot of different things. We'll, we'll be looking at those requests really carefully.
Could we, could we talk with Pepco about whether there might be a possibility? Should we in the future get a request from these companies to put these things in? If they'd be doing open trenching, would Pepco be willing to coordinate with us and if so, how much would that cost?
Can I, can I just make a point on that? I know in North Tacoma, for example, all this open trenching, that's just the, the major um, transmission lines, and then from that still uh, to the homes is it, is not part of what's being put there. And I'm not saying that it isn't uh, convenient and desirable in some ways, but um, the feedback that I've gotten from the North Tacoma experience is that it's kind of two separate things. Doesn't mean we can't ask about it, but.
I can, I can have a whole nother conversation about Pepco and undergrounding. Um, we have wanted that for a long time. Um, the, there's many reasons why they don't wanna do it. Um, and the other reason is that because anything that goes off of the right of way to the people, to connect to the people's homes has to, is the cost is borne by the people, uh, whose homes they are. And so, it's a, it's, it's not an issue for to discuss tonight, but I'm happy to go through what they've told us.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed the meeting on Thursday, I was traveling, but um, it may be that the telecommunications wires don't need to be buried as deep as electrical wires. I think that may be the case.
I have a few extra logistical things, but I see a bunch of lights, so I'll let other people.
No, why don't you finish up, that's all.
Alright, um.
Cause you may ask the question somebody else asked.
Um, so, the other things are related to specific wording in the ordinance. Um, I had a question about, um, so, A B, A slash B with the, um, so, an eleven, twelve, oh one oh, um, line number, I didn't write it down that way. Line number thirty-eight. It says if an equipment box not exceed twelve cubic feet, if installed above ground and not exceed twenty cubic feet, if installed at ground level. Um, then there is another location in here that also has those same, um, those same figures. And then looking to two G on page eight, um.
There's a different set of sizes on line sixty-four, for example.
Yeah, it lists, I believe, exactly. Yeah, and in line sixty-four, it says an equipment box or boxes no greater in collective size than twenty-eight cubic feet in volume, provided that neither the width nor the depth of any box makes you two linear feet. It seems like those things are contradictory.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a closer look at this. Um, so, uh, one, and one is like the total.
And the other one's the attachment?
Yeah, I I think that, that's one distinction, um, and and also, there's like a total volume purple, um, so, I believe that there consists, but I'll certainly double check that.
Another place where numbers are, uh, cubic feet are re, are mentioned is in lines two oh eight on. This was one of my questions also, obviously, and then again on two thirty-two. Um, and while we're on the subject and how that, I would like to know, um, when you look at that, all of that, what the county's ETA asks for, because I think that may be also about to change.
And I'm pretty sure that what we heard at MML was that these were eighteen cubic feet on the poles, which seems to not work with the twelve cubic feet. So, it doesn't seem like this corresponds with what we heard from Crown Castle.
Meaning what they said the actual sizes?
Yeah, they said it was gonna be eighteen cubic feet on the poles and I think twenty-nine on the ground, something like that, yeah.
And I don't know, again, I hate to show my age, but when uh, cable TV was strung here in Tacoma Park, there was a big pushback from the community because of the boxes that they hung on the poles. Uh, they're about the size of a shoebox, so.
Um, the other next thing is, so, in addition to, uh, so, in line forty-two, it says not obstruct parking, prevent, including preventing persons from entering and exiting vehicles parked in the right of way. Um, I think that's great. I also think we should look at adding um, some language to make sure they don't restrict sightlines for streets and for driveways. I know there are issues with people who have a hard time backing out of their driveways, for example, because there's a pole nearby.
I think that would, uh, that may fall under um, uh, safety standards.
Yeah, I mean, where wherever we can put it is fine. I was just thinking if, if we're mentioning it there, we could possibly add on.
You could just clarify, line thirty-five says not obstruct pedestrian or vehicle traffic flow or sightlines.
Oh, okay.
I think it's, you got it, in line thirty-five.
Um, and for line sixty-nine, it says for attachments located in a historic district, be shrouded to minimize visibility. Is there something required in the FCC law that requires that to be in the historic district only? Or can that be something more general?
Um, I, I mean, we've, we have more leeway certainly in the historic district. I mean, there, there's no, there's no clarity yet on what we can and can't do. But uh, but you know, if it's a hor- historic district, um, we have a stronger case that it's a, uh, you know, there's a reasonable requirement.
May- maybe there's a way that we could expand that though to to not just have historic district, but other districts where there are aesthetic guidelines or something? Cause I could imagine a commercial district that has a certain design feature or something like that, that that might meet the federal requirements be, of of aesthetics for things. So, I, you know, that may be a way to, to broaden that a little bit.
Yeah, and if there isn't a need for it to be specific to historic districts, I think we should ask for that in general to provide a more visually pleasing thing throughout the city, not just in those districts. And then my final thing is, um, line one ninety-nine, says if necessary, because an existing utility pole does not have the capacity for necessary communications facilities, no more than ten feet taller than the existing utility pole and be located, but yada, yada, yada. Um, basically, if they're, they can replace, they can put in a new pole. Um, I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't allow them to just put a new pole right next to an existing pole, but they would actually have to remove the old pole and replace it. Is that right?
Um, that's certainly the intent. I can make sure that, um, that that's what we require.
And then it goes to the city manager's comment earlier. I think we should make it very clear they need to, it's replacing and removing a pole. Great, thank you. Great, councilmember Kovar?
Thanks. Um, first of all, Mr. Seaman mentioned this, but I think it's important for people who are watching, we're not doing this because we want to invite the companies in, but we're trying to respond to what the FCC did in a way that gives us as much control as we can have under the FCC guidelines, right? Um, I think it's also worth noting, and this is for whatever reason, um, conservatives who like to say that local control is the most important thing, it's really just when they're trying to, you know, stop civil rights laws, but when they, when something like this comes up, they're happy to take our parayings. I'm just gonna put that out there. Um, I think we should try to do it as as strong as we can and and see how much we can get. Um, if we went too far, whatever that would mean, in a way that went beyond what the FCC ends up permitting, is that just lawsuit territory again? Is that, is that what would be the concern?
That, that's the, the risk.
Okay, so, um, so we should go as far as we can without being sued. Um, a, a few questions I want to ask. So, one thing that came up at the MML meeting, and there wasn't really a great answer on it, uh, Crown Castle, which is the company that would do the installation, or one of the companies that would do the installation, they're working with the telecom companies. You, you know, I asked them if there are any plans to do any sort of equity actions. And they weren't, but they sort of didn't say they were against them. So, could we require, just freelancing here, but um, help to low and moderate income residents, wiring of buildings for wifi, you know, insisting that everybody in the city gets fast service if they're going to do this? Do we have any ability to do things like that? Is that covered by?
No, I, I don't think we do. Um, the, the, the federal law allows for states, but not local governments, to impose what they call universal uh, service requirements, which is, um, I believe that would fall.
So, what if it's not universal? What if it's just, you gotta help us out on four buildings over here? Or is, or is part of our franchise agreement, could we negotiate that?
Uh, I mean, that's the kind of thing that people were doing before, um, this FCC uh, order, but not, uh, but not anymore.
Okay.
Really, it's, you know, anything that that adds to the, the cost is, is underscrut.
So, you mentioned, and I I might have missed it, I apologize, but about public notice. Is there a requirement for public notice, or could we, for example, say, say Crown Castle or another company comes in and says, we're going to do, you know, a hundred and forty poles in this area, could we say when the installation is above a certain number of poles, we can have a requirement for some sort of community meeting, or that they come before us and present on it? Or would that all just fall within the shot clock anyway?
Um, I mean, it would, it would all have to be within the shot clock. I mean, I think, um, more, more realistic objective would be just to, you know, requ- require the information, so, so we have it and possibly require that they post it in the, in the area where they're working.
But is there a downside to saying there should be a presentation? And they can hear from the community? Is that harmful if it was done within the requisite period?
Um, hmm, I think it's probably okay. Again, it's just, um, kind of the more requirements we put on them, the more, uh, you know, likely we are to be challenged.
Okay, um, just can I ask a few more questions?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify on the, on the notification piece, what I heard councilwoman Kostick say, I think she said, which I agreed with, is not that they give notice that the, um, the cell towers are being put in, but notification that it's being considered. So, notification that the application's being put in and that not noticing that it's happening. Is there a difference?
Yes, I, I mean, I see the difference and so that, that's what I heard.
Okay, just when you said notice, right, that, that's why I just wanted to clarify.
I was referring to the same, maybe the term was wrong, but if they're proposing to do that, it doesn't help much in the way of community engagement. It's just, hey, we're doing it tomorrow, guys. I mean, it would be nice to know, but I'd like to have it happen before.
I think you need both.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Exactly. Um, just a few other things, so, um, the, the Crown Castle people said it's not for five G at the meeting. They said it's for four G. So, that is or isn't good, but I think we should avoid messaging this as, don't worry, everybody, this is to make your phones go into five G. They, he said it isn't for that.
Yeah.
So, uh, I just put that out there. Um, so if two companies don't wanna co-locate, and I think the Crown Castle representative or one of the other speakers at this MML meeting also said, um, at least one of the companies, I think Verizon, doesn't like to co-locate. So, would that mean we could have two poles side by side, uh, to to accommodate the companies that don't wanna be on the same pole?
Um, I mean, but again, I've, I'm not an expert on this, but I believe that in the city, we're generally going to be talking about using existing utility poles. And if there were some technical reason, like I think Verizon has some different antenna technology than, than the other carriers that they interfere with each other and have to be separate, then that's, um, then that would be, you know, a valid reason to allow them.
Just a couple of other things here. So, ADA access is that?
Real quick, but I thought that they had to be a certain distance from one another. Like, I thought one tower couldn't, like, you couldn't have two immediately, like, right next to each other, two separate ones. Like, they had to be a certain distance from one another.
You mean, is a technical, so they function or?
No, I thought, and maybe I'm making this up from the MML meeting, but I thought that they had to be a certain distance from one another.
I don't know.
The poles?
The poles, yeah.
Of different companies?
Right, like, the units had to be a certain distance from one another, like, they couldn't, yeah, the nodes, exactly. So, I, I, so, could it ever be the case that you would have two immediately side by, like, some, one company A come in and you, on an existing pole, and company B comes in and puts a pole right next to it? I thought that couldn't happen because they, the nodes had to. I thought that couldn't happen because the nodes had to, they had to be a certain feet away from one another.
Oh, I thought that they had to co-locate. I thought that.
Yes, I think they have to co-locate. They all have to be on one pole. Whoever gets that contract to install has to make it so that everybody can be on that pole.
Unless there's a technical reason they can't be, in which case it's on them to prove it. I think it's on them to prove it to us that they can't be on the same pole with the other carriers.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood that point and you wouldn't have.
Well, we should make sure that's right.
Yeah.
At the meeting, they said it's okay for us to insist that the poles be structurally sound. Do you have something on that in there?
I do.
Okay. So ADA access, is that, is that an issue? Does that automatically apply? Because there's some poles already that are not ADA compliant.
Yes, I mean, it would automatically apply, but I did include it in the ordinance as well.
Okay.
And just a handful of other things. On the color of poles, you have a lot in there about how the color should match whatever it's on. That was a bit of a controversy up at Philadelphia and Tacoma Avenue when a silver pole that can't be painted was, was put in. So if we can take a look at that and maybe not say it has to be the same color as the thing, but a color that would match the area, because I could imagine if the box is silver, then they're just gonna paint, all the, all the poles will end up being silver and it'll look bad, and maybe green or brown would be better. I'm not sure what exactly was meant when you phrased it that way, but that'll be something that'll be worth looking at.
And I, you know, I looked at a lot of different ordinances trying to come up with the best provisions, and I couldn't find anything, you know, particularly satisfactory about the.
All right, well, maybe we can.
Those issues.
We can look at that again.
I guess on that one, I, my interpretation had been that you had to match the pole, not change the pole to match your equipment.
Right, but if it's a new pole or whatever, I guess that's the question.
Well, you, right.
But you're saying if it's a brown pole, you'd have to shroud it in something or paint it in something that would be brown, I guess, right?
As long as they don't try to make it look like a tree.
No, no little green boxes on the top?
Yeah.
So I'm almost done. Two more questions and then one other point. So trees, does that automatically apply, our tree ordinance?
Um, I'm.
Since Terry just mentioned that.
I am concerned about the interplay between the tree ordinance.
What does that mean?
And these permits. I don't know. Did you all get the sense at that meeting that the trenching would be in the roadway, or would it be in the, in the grass?
Wherever they need to do it.
Because, I mean, I think that's where you get the most interaction with the trees. And I'm worried about the timing issues with tree permits and the, and the cost. Like I don't think we can even charge for a tree permit on top of the, the statutorily limited or.
I mean, I personally like to see us insist on it. And if that's one of the things that people object to, you know, sometimes it's worth having a, you know, a dispute.
Right.
To try to get that. So you mentioned what happens on private property and our rights of way. What about when it's state highway? I didn't hear, is that still a third way? Or does that get covered by the ZTA, or it doesn't get covered by?
No, it would be the, whatever the state's.
So there's three different things at least that would apply. The last thing I just want to say, I've mentioned this a lot, and I understand because of the legal uncertainties about how utilities operate, that it's too much for us to try to add utility restrictions in general that would apply, for example, to Pepco and WSSC to this effort as it's going through and something we need to pass by the end of the year. However, it's quite obvious that it's all connected because there's even, we're talking here about ripping up the street. So once we just complete action on this, maybe in the early part of next year, whenever we can get to it, it is a council priority to work on contractors and utilities operating within the city and not that we want to go back to the same section of the code, but I would like to see us do that.
Unfortunately, I suspect we'll be coming back to this as the law develops.
I'd urge my colleagues to join me in working on that as soon as we can going forward. Not right now, because we don't know enough about how our laws and the state utility laws come into play. But clearly, if they're gonna be tearing up the roads anyway to do these things, it all sort of fits together. So thank you.
Councilwoman DeBau.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of specific questions about language line by line. I don't want to get into that now. I want to back up a step. And maybe I stepped out at the time that some, that you all discussed this, but the county, and I realize that the county zoning amendment applies to private property and not to the city public right of way. But since you used some parts of it as a model, what did the county do or not do on the other night? Did you all talk about this yet? Because I am, I am under the impression they postponed it, but they also passed Huckers Amendment that changed the conditional use versus limited use by right from 30 feet to 60 feet. So if that's true, then how does that affect what you've put here? Because you have 30 feet as a kickoff for a lot of this, a lot of the permitting. So I just ask you to think through, if the county goes with 60, for the break off between limited use by right and conditional use, how does that affect this? Because it looks like we're going to be first out of the box compared to the county. Because we're trying to get this done by.
No, the county has to get done before October 30th.
Thank you.
Or else they can't pass it before recess. So their drop dead date is Tuesday.
Okay, so then, then, yeah.
Or else it's done.
All right, so forget that part.
They're not doing it.
All right, forget that part, but the part about if they go with the 60 versus 30, let's think that one through.
I, I mean, I think the 60-foot setback requirement is problematic in the county, and I think it would be really problematic here because I think that would mean, you know, most of the poles are probably off limits. So, you know, there wouldn't.
Or would have to go through conditional use at the county.
Well, if we're just talking about our rights of way. If we were to say there has to be a 60-foot setback, I think that would eliminate. I mean, I don't think you'd be able to put many antennas in Tacoma Park. And I think that would be a denial of service.
Yeah, what I was thinking is if it goes from being limited use at the county to conditional use at the county, does that give the city a little more room in terms of, I mean, conditions in a different way now? Conditions that we might attach or things we might require or request? Because it's not. Automatically by, it's not a limited use, it's not a given, if you will.
Well, I mean, we, we're, we're setting our own policy for our right of way. So technically, if the county made that change and we didn't, we would just be applying our law.
Okay. I thought you said in here that you were using them as a model, so maybe I misunderstood something.
Well, I, I was using the, prior to the proposed amendments, that I think, I, I think the amendments that they were talking about, the county council was talking about would, are problematic. So I wouldn't recommend going to a 60-foot setback requirement in the city.
If I could, if I could interject for a minute. My understanding of the 30 versus 60 requirement, the reason for having that was because if it was the 60, then these would not be automatically granted at the county level. And so I guess it seems to me that this is, the 30 versus 60 question is not so much about 60 versus 30. It's more about the level of review capacity we have as a city. And so to me, that goes back to the question of how involved or not involved is the tower committee.
I, I think it has more to do with the fact that we're so densely developed, it was developed with such small lots that then we would basically be requiring all of them to go through this process as opposed to which, which I think triggers that federal concern. Is that correct? Ken?
Well, I guess, yes. If we, if we had 60-foot and, you know, you could make your case that it should be 30 feet, then I think we'd end up having. Well, we don't have to set up a hearing, it could be a staff decision, but, you know, I think we'd be going through that for practically every, every permit application and then, and then granting it. I just don't think 60 feet is a practical limitation, particularly in Tacoma Park.
However, I, I would argue that if the county goes to 60, then we should mirror that. Because if it then would imply that the county, in the county right of way, there is a little bit more of a review process than in the city right of way, then are you, in essence, making people just go through the city process, right? Like, so if the county, if Huckers Amendment goes through and he sets it at the 60 and the conditional and there's a level of review, then, then I don't see how we could not, not do 62, if that makes sense. We would have to mirror whatever setback that they require. Otherwise, we would be the less stringent requirement and therefore, people would be more inclined to.
Start here.
Start here in the city right of way versus on private property in the city because the setback would be.
What does Gaithersburg have?
I'm not sure what they're.
Because I know, I'm sorry, I know when we talked about this before, I think, Ken, you mentioned that Gaithersburg's ordinance is much more complex. And so I, I mean, I think that might be a good thing just to double check. I know we're, we're different than Gaithersburg, but I think it would be. Useful to see what they're, what they set their requirements at.
So my recollection is that what Gaithersburg did was they were trying to discourage installations in the right of way and push people to, or push the antennas, even the small ones, onto private property. Not with the intent of, but, but the Gaithersburg law was passed well before the FCC order came out. But I'll, I'll look and see what their setbacks are.
I think it might even just be interesting to talk to their attorneys now, given that the FCC has come out and what the county is doing to find out what, if they plan on going back and reviewing and.
Yes, no, definitely. I've, I've talked to Frank Johnson. He's mostly in charge of that in Gaithersburg. I've talked to him several times as I've been working on this.
I think one difference with Gaithersburg is I think their, I think their zoning is, I mean, they do their own zoning.
Right.
And so they, they handle their streets as not as part of the zone, which is not how the county does it. So it may not, it may not be, it's an apples to apples comparison, but it would be still useful to, to hear. So another question that I have, which came up again in the discussion with, at the MML meeting, was the question of how many poles per application or how many facility, small tel, small cell units, facilities, I'm not sure what the right word is, per application. And the county has a number, so many, only so, up to so many per application. And I only read this once, but I didn't see it in here. And that might be one way. To manage the, to manage the, the volume and, and get some fees. And that's what was discussed with the, at the MML, county MML meeting. So were you assuming one application per pole? Or were you assuming one application per company for everything in the city or somewhere in between?
Well, each pole would be a separate application and the. I mean, the attachments just, and again, this is just from what I've. Basically, what I, what I read in the FCC order, the way they set up the fee limits, it, it implies that, you know, they're usually done in batches. And I believe it's actually preferable from kind of a planning and, you know, decision-making standpoint that we get multiple applications at one time. So, you know, we can see. And one of the requirements is here, in here is that they let us know, like, their plans for the next, I think it's 12 months. It's to kind of see how many of these things are coming and figuring, figuring out where they can go. So I'm not sure we want to discourage multiple applications, but, but I'll look into that issue.
So you were treating them as one pole, one, one application for every unit, for every pole? But we would want to have language in here that encourages batching, if you will.
Possibly. I, I mean, I can figure out which, so you think it's the county that limits the number of applications?
I, I don't know. That's the, that's one of the questions. I thought that they grouped them so many poles per application and that maybe I misheard that.
I think there's a maximum.
Maximum. So that implies that more than one small cell would be in an application.
Right.
Up to a maximum. So if that's not what we want, and if that's a difference from the county, then we just need to make it clear. And at the same time, I know, I know I read at the place where you say that we're requiring that they tell us what the plane is throughout, within the city. Not one application and then a week from now, another application for a pole a block away. Without any warning. You know, to me, I mean, I think the batches are helpful, but I can understand a point of a maximum if we're actually looking pole by pole and having to, as staff, review distance requirements.
There's that too, yeah.
And how much tree damage there would be and color of the pole and all those kinds of things. So I could understand having something that at least allows it to be manageable by staff. Okay, so that's an area that we need to do a little more thinking on, I guess. I also had the.
Cindy, could I, could I just mention one? Did you say this already? I apologize because I was just, there's another water main break north Tacoma.
Oh, no.
So I was sending some, that information on to the SEC and Public Works. But I recall in MML, in the MML meeting, maybe you said this already, I apologize. They did say that it's possible to charge more than the, than the fees that are in the SEC rule or regulations if the volume of work is such that, you know, it requires a lot of extra staff time.
I did say that, but I remember that.
So while we're limited in theory to those numbers, if it turns out that in the first two years, you know, that four or five different companies each come in with, you know, 500 batch, you know, poll requests or whatever, I think we ought to include in there the ability to charge more in line with that if that were to come about. Because it could, I can imagine at the beginning, if there's a sudden flood, it could be impossible for the existing staff to handle it. So maybe there's a way to say that that's aligned with what the FCC rule says, at least as MML told us the other day. So sorry to interrupt.
That's useful.
Well, yes, I mean, like you say, I did not put the fees in the code. We can put them in, in regulations and yes, we can charge more than the, you know, kind of the recommended limits. It's just that if we stick with those limits, then, then we know we're in compliance.
I mean, I guess I was just saying, if we could leave it out, we don't have to mention the fees, but maybe we could say we have the ability to charge fees that are commensurate to what the burden on the staff is or something like that. So we give ourselves that opportunity if it came about. That's kind of what I was thinking.
Okay, but that, that's implicit. Technically, all our fees should, should be only, should be based on what the cost of the city is.
But it probably won't be with what FCC has done to us, so. Okay, sorry.
So, some of the other points that people brought up already about public notification and how this relates to the tree permitting system were things I was going to ask about. I did want to, um, ask about if the fees are not in the code, do we want to say that they're set up by regulation? Because if, as I read this, I saw a lot of, the director will do this, the director will do that. But it didn't actually say, we'll do this by, by administrative regulation. And maybe it needs to say that. I don't, that's just, I don't know.
Okay.
Question.
I mean, we, we can certainly do an express authorization of, of regulations.
Yeah, because I understand why we're in a hurry on some of this stuff to be able to change it quickly. Because I was thinking not just about if the FCC rules go final, but I was also thinking about what happens if then a week or a month or two months later, there's a court case that puts that on hold and we're back to no FCC rules. Will this give us the flexibility to, to do, to do something, to, to, to implement the system without relying on the assumption that the FCC rules are going to go through? You see what I mean?
Uh, yes. I mean, I'm, I'm trying, trying to retain, retain flexibility.
Great, okay. Um, thanks. You know, this is tough stuff and I really appreciate the draft.
Councilmember Smith, do you have?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions, follow-ups. Regarding equipment on the ground, can we require, uh, some type of vegetation shielding around that equipment?
I don't think we would want to require it. I mean, I think that's, goes to the site distance questions and stuff. It may be part of what we would want to require on a site-by-site basis, but I think that's, that's more a discretionary item. At, you know, it'd be great if we have the authority to require them on a site-by-site basis, but I, I think we, we wouldn't want to require it outright just because we don't know what the situation is at a particular location.
Okay.
So, where it says shrouded, it, it would say shredded or otherwise shielded or something like that to give the option.
Yeah, let's, let's
Without it being so much work that we can't get it done in time, right?
Right. And, you know, I think vegetation also, I envision these being mostly in the right-of-way strips. I don't know if there's going to be room for, for, uh, you know, the plant around the
Who maintains the vegetation?
Regarding state legislation, if the state passes a bill, uh, next year, could they take the field and have all our legislation just thrown out and the county's legislation? Because I read that when states have come into this, whatever fees that you come up with, those are all thrown out and you have to go with whatever the lower fee is that the state has.
Uh, certainly with the, with the fees, the state could limit them more than the, the FCC did. The, uh, you know, I, I think it would depend on the language of the bill, um, kind of how that impacts the, our regulation of the right-of-way is a, is a somewhat unique, um, issue. So, I'd, I'd have to see what they're proposing. And I, I don't remember the bill from, uh,
Last year.
from last session.
Well, I, I, I would think that the state is probably going to get into this, so, um, stand by. On, uh, the lawsuit, if there is a lawsuit, does that throughout the entire ordinance? Or does it just, would it just apply to whatever the issue is that the, the industry has, whether it's
It's whatever issues they successfully challenge.
Okay. And, you know, we, offline, we talked about, um, technology and about how we could, you know, force the industry to implement some of the, um, new technology that might come from this. I would just ask my colleagues to, to consider a resolution outside of this that, that we can talk about some of that technology. And then finally, um, can we say something about if, you know, smaller boxes or, you know, equipment becomes available that the industry has to, or the, the, uh, installers have to bring it to us? Rather than, you know, we got this refrigerator-sized box out there, uh,
You mean like to, to replace existing?
Right, right. When we know that the technology is there, when they, we know that they have replacement, can we say that they have to bring us, you know, something that, that they have available?
That's, that's a good question. I don't know the answer. Um.
Well, related to it, I actually think, going back to the orphan wires and, and left wires, is there something to say if it's no longer used, that they have to remove it within a certain amount of time? Because what we don't want to have happen, I think this is a really good point, is if the technology advances, right, and they start using something else, and then they leave the old stuff there and don't remove it.
Yeah, I, I do address that. I have addressed that.
Yeah, because, you know, that
And, you know, for the wires, uh, it would be great if we could require them to barcode them, so that it would be easier to identify. But thank you, Ken.
Councilmember Kostick.
I just have one final question, um, based on your answer regarding the S H A roads and the right-of-way there. At the MML meeting, Gaithersburg, Crown Castle was talking about their interactions with Gaithersburg and how in some cases they had to apply to the state instead of the city. So, in our right-of-ways along St. Carroll Avenue, would those, if they wanted to put in towers there, they would have to apply to the state, not to the city?
Correct.
Do we get any notification of that or could we, is there a way to write into this that they need to notify us if they're in the city, not in a city right-of-way, or is that beyond our capacity?
Um, uh, we, we could not require that of the, the installers, um, but, uh, but we could try to work something out.
We do have an MOU with S H A of an 410, and it may be something that we could expand, um, if we work creatively with our S H A reps to, um, include elsewhere so that we would get, uh, uh, the notification.
Yeah, I think that'll be important to do because I think those will be in some of the most visible places in the city potentially. So, we, we probably want to make sure that we have that notification and know what's happening at that level.
Great, all right. Well, lots of feedback, um, and I guess we'll also, uh, see what the county council does with this. And this is coming back for the first vote on November seventh, so.
All right. I appreciate it. And any more feedback, I'm happy to receive it because it helps to have extra eyes looking at this.
Could I ask one question on it?
Yeah.
So, if we have thoughts on language changes and so on, um, based on this discussion, should we just ship them to Canon Share with everybody or what's the
Yeah, I think we, I mean, I, I think earlier versions of this, Councilwoman Cersei Smith and I had sent in some edits and just how we do other things, if they're aligned edits or questions, the easiest way to do it, I think, given the timeframe we have here, is to email them to everybody.
We'd like to have it by the November seventh meeting.
Well, we need it before that to
Yeah, so that we can
Right.
Actually have time to do it.
Yeah, so on the plane to Boise tomorrow. All right, next. Purchasing code, proposed amendments. Can mix it up here and have a PowerPoint?
So, this is fun.
Keep you on your toes, Mayor. So, we have been batting around the notion of updating the purchasing code for some time now. And finally, we're, um, getting to it in earnest. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to, um, get before you the conversation of, uh, amending the purchasing code to provide you with some information, um, about, uh, the areas of the code that staff would propose being amended and for you all to have a discussion and provide us with feedback that can be used in order to actually draft, uh, amendments for your consideration at a future council meeting. Right now, uh, we're hoping to bring this back before you on November fourteenth, um, for our first reading. So, all city purchases must be made in accordance with the city's code. We also have administrative regulations, uh, that guide, um, our purchasing practices, provides checks and balances, uh, internally. The code hasn't been substantively updated since before two thousand. Nobody can really pinpoint exactly when, um, other than minor clarifications or additions, but, uh, the city manager has said it was before she was here and she's been here for twenty-six years, twenty-five years now. Right now, uh, is an opportune time to do it. Ten years ago might have been an opportune, opportune time to do it. But, um, you know, costs increase over time, um, and there's inflation and our dollar thresholds, um, triggers for who must be approving certain types of purchases haven't kept pace with, uh, increasing costs. Changing the code will allow us to, uh, make more timely purchases. It'll afford, uh, staff some flexibility, allow us to be more nimble and actually realize some cost savings. And we can point to some specific examples where the purch-, the existing purchasing code has, um, restricted us from, um, realizing some savings in purchases. And there's a need for some general, general corrections and clarifications. So, regarding the, uh, the general corrections and clarifications, right now, the current code includes references to federal funds, contracts, agreements, regulations, things like that, but there isn't a reference to state, uh, or county funds, contracts, regulations. So, uh, in order to clean up the code, we want to make sure that, uh, references to state and county are included where appropriate. There's also in the current code, uh, the existing code, a requirement that all contracts involving more than three thousand dollars be in writing. And what we're proposing is the requirement that there is written documentation for all purchases regardless of cost. Um, and we want to redefine what a formal contract is. We want to define a formal contract as a written contract for procurements exceeding three thousand dollars and requiring, I'm sorry, thirty thousand dollars and requiring the city manager's signature. Right now, the contracts is technically defined as any, any purchase that we make. Even though, uh, a formal contract is defined as something involving more than three thousand dollars, must be in writing and it's supposed to be signed by the mayor and/or city manager. So, uh, the crux of, of this slide is about what must have a formal contract in place, who can award the contract or otherwise approve the purchases and what the dollar thresholds or triggers are, uh, for who must make, uh, those approvals. Currently, council must formally approve, um, a purchase of professional services greater than five thousand dollars and goods greater than ten thousand dollars. And that's even if it is included in the budget that you have approved, even if it is a sole source item. We have to put together an agenda item that comes to, comes before council and you all have to formally approve it, um, a second time, sometimes a third time. Right now, uh, the city manager must approve all other purchases. And contract authority rests currently with the mayor, um, or the, and/or the city manager. We, we hope in the, the, uh, propose, in the amended code to, uh, make some clarifications there as well. Staff proposes, and I'll speak, uh, a, a little bit more, uh, to some of these proposals in the, the following slide and, and slides following that one. Uh, but, but what staff is proposing is that council approve purchases greater than fifty thousand dollars. The city manager sign contracts, uh, and approve purchases for anything greater than thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, the city manager's designee can approve purchases less than thirty thousand dollars. And that can be either me, um, or a department head. Generally, uh, at least the deputy city manager level will be approving everything through the internal checks and balances that we have in place. And, uh, and, uh, if council is amenable to these suggestions or something along these lines, we would also, um, require new, there would, we would also, um, put in place new reporting requirements so that council was always kept in the loop, even if they weren't formally the body approving these purchases. And just, um, for a little bit of context, I did a not very scientific, uh, survey of local government, um, uh, managers in Maryland. And when I say not very scientific, I sent an email out to, uh, as many managers I had in my list and said, hey, uh, we're looking into this. Can you all, um, provide me with what your thresholds are currently for, uh, council approval of, of purchases? You'll see, um, currently we're at, um, ten thousand dollars. That's for, um, goods. For, um, other purchases, it's actually, uh, professional services, it's actually five thousand dollars. And relative to where our budget is, uh, you can see we're pretty low on the list. Something closer, uh, we're, we're more closely aligned with, um, and from a budget standpoint to, uh, a place like Laurel, which has a thirty-five thousand dollar threshold. And, uh, a, a, a number of the managers responded that were also on the lower end said that they're, they're very interested to see, um, the results of my not scientific survey, but also, um, uh, where we, uh, we go because they're interested in bringing the same thing before their council. And I would note, just, um, anecdotally, the contracts that I, that are in my wheelhouse are typically between, they're, they're, they're about at the threshold of thirty thousand dollars or so. Uh, I'm, I'm often responsible for, um, for putting out RFPs and contracting, putting contracts in place for, uh, software and IT purchases, um, bulk computers, things like that. And, um, and thirty thousand dollars is a, a pretty good, a pretty good line. So, as I mentioned before, if council is amenable to, um, changing, uh, some of the, uh, award authority and the dollar thresholds, we would also put in place more rigorous reporting requirements. Currently, according to the code, the city manager must provide a report listing, uh, disposed equipment or goods to council on a quarterly basis, um, and must provide a report when there's a sole source or emergency procurement or when fewer than three quotes are obtained for a professional service.
Just to note, I don't do that. I certainly identify when there's a sole source procurement, but these other items are things we've not adhered to. And I was actually surprised when I was rereading, I was like, huh, should have been doing that.
So, what we're proposing, uh, regarding report, required reporting is, um, is an annual report, report to the council regarding all purchases between thirty thousand and fifty thousand dollars and all emergency purchases between ten and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we would also provide an immediate report to council regarding all emergency purchases, um, above thirty thousand dollars. This is all information we're already sharing with council. Right now, you're formally approving things above ten thousand dollars. But, uh, we feel like it makes sense to codify the reporting requirement to ensure that that continues to happen regardless who, um, is on staff.
And can we just have a feedback, one second? And emergency purchases, does that mean they're not budgeted?
So, emergency is defined in the code as when there exists a threat to the public health, welfare, or safety under emergency conditions, provided that the city administrator or designee shall make a written determination of the basis for the emergency.
So, the only times that this has come into play that I know of is, is when we've had to all of a sudden contract for more snow removal help or some other kind of thing like that. Uh, it's pretty rare.
Yeah, so generally, yeah, it's, it's something that's not budgeted, may be able to absorb it, maybe have to do a budget amendment depending on the, the, uh, how expensive it is.
The budgeting, that's the issue. It's the, um, you know, the need to
Right. Correct. So, yeah, technically, you know, if it's not an emergency, we have to, um, notice it, bring it to council at a, an official meeting. Council has to make a public decision about the purchase.
And this wouldn't, wouldn't include, like, if we had any end-of-year funds that we are reallocating or reassigning? So, let's say towards the end of the fiscal year, certain projects don't advance in a particular way. We end up with the resources and we're trying to figure out what to do with them.
The only time that that might come into play is if it's a grant.
Okay.
If it's ours, the money disappears and then you reallocate it or whatever. But if, but I could, there have been some situations where we had to act really quickly to take advantage of a grant.
Okay.
Yes, but even, even in that example, um, you know, if it, if it fell below the threshold of requiring, um, count, formal council approval, if council was interested in something, they could, they could express the, the interest to the city the interest to the city manager, who would then have the authority to make the purchase without it coming to council at, you know, two, three weeks down the road, at a meeting two or three weeks down the road. Regarding procedural requirements, again, we're already sharing a lot of this information. It would, amending the code would just formalize some of the steps. Right now, we, the code requires competitive sealed bid or proposal for purchases over $10,000. Formal competitive bid or proposals aren't required for professional services, but we have to enter into a competitive negotiation or other competitive selection. There's also a requirement that staff obtain at least three quotes or proposals for any purchase. Technically, if we buy a pen, we're supposed to get three quotes for it. And that can be onerous for things like pens, for example. Or, we have to, technically, we should be proving that this is the, I don't like this one, actually, but this is the specific pen that I have to use to do my job, and we need to be getting a sign off that it is the sole source. They are the only manufacturer that makes the pen that I like. I'm more of a pencil person. What we're proposing as amendments is that competitive sealed bids, the requirement for those are, it's increased from $10,000 to $30,000. That we're proposing a requirement that staff obtain at least three quotes or proposals for purchases over $10,000, and of course, that reasonable efforts are made to obtain the lowest cost for any purchases, even if it is a set of pens or something like that. We do expect that staff is doing their homework and making sure that we're getting the best price within the bounds of the code. So there are currently a few exceptions to some of these procedural requirements, and they include emergencies, sole source, and cooperative purchasing. The city is a party to different cooperative purchasing agreements, where there are cooperative contracts, state contracts, things like that, where the lowest price for a municipality has already been negotiated, and we're able to purchase things from those, through those agreements, without having to do the competitive sealed bid or the competitive proposal process. What we're proposing is adding, retaining all of those, but creating a new exception that allows the city to take advantage of limited-term sale offers. A lot of times, towards the end of the fiscal year, companies know that, it happens more often, probably in the federal government, but there are pots of money that could be spent, and oftentimes, the companies, in order to try to get those dollars, are creating sales towards the end of a fiscal year. We, just towards the end of last fiscal year, there was a sale on a technology purchase that is budgeted for the current fiscal year, and we probably would have saved about $20,000 if we could have jumped on it, you know, that week. It wouldn't, it would not have qualified as an emergency, but there was a kind of end-of-year sale, and we were unable to take advantage of it because we didn't have, we didn't have the flexibility to do that. That was, that was about a $30,000, $35,000 purchase. That's why.
It was $20,000.
Yeah, about, yeah. Some other proposed amendments, currently, there, and this is another area that we hope would just allow us some work flexibility, the ability to be nimble. We wouldn't expect anything to change in our practices, but we could take action without having to amend the code again. And I'm talking about the environmentally preferable purchasing requirements in the code. Right now, there's some, there are requirements outlined in the code about the efforts we should be taking to make environmentally preferable purchases, recycled materials, energy-efficient things. And we're proposing to keep the reference to environmentally preferable purchasing requirements in the code, but moving the specifics to administrative regulations. That would allow us to, you know, be able to respond to changes in technology or regulations without having to change our code. And then, another proposed amendment, the current code does not provide regulations for multi-term, or what are often called evergreen or renewable contracts, and we think that we should, in the code, explicitly permit multi-term contracts and permit the city manager to determine when a multi-term contract can be renewed versus requiring a new procurement process. The code would specify that we have the ability to do that, and the details of that would ideally be included in administrative regulations.
And I want to mention, this is, for things that we routinely re-up or continue, we probably should have been bringing them to you under the current code. And, you know, and frankly, we're driving IT staff in particular up the wall, because we're now saying that's, some of the things you had on your agenda this evening, and will be, and have been seeing, are because we're trying to adhere to the current code, but it is burdensome.
Things like, you know, our Adobe licenses, or our Microsoft Office licenses, or our annual computer replacement, which are all included in the budget, but we're having to, we're having to enter into new contracts and then bring them before council annually, while we're supposed to be doing that annually, and we're getting in the habit of that. But this would, you know, even for a contract exceeding the proposed $50,000 that council had to approve, this would allow a council to approve it and then permit the city manager to renew it on an annual basis as the city manager sees fit.
And, you know, as we write the regulations or that kind of thing, to me, I think it's really important that we have something in there that says, you know, especially like every five years, there's a real assessment about, is this the appropriate kind of contract to have? Because right now, some of the things just keep on and keep on, and there's nothing that's triggering them to come to our attention to look at. We now have a technology steering committee that really looks at some different things, so we've been starting to put that stuff into process, but it's not written anywhere. And I think, I don't want to have to be required to do this every year, but I do want it to be triggered somewhere that we need to do it on a regular basis.
And as far as next steps go, you know, tonight, we want to hear your feedback, and we can respond to questions, and based on your discussion, we'll work with the city attorney to draft new code language for your consideration at a later date. As I mentioned previously, right now, that's scheduled to come back before you, amended code, proposed code amendments at your November fourteen meeting.
And we have seen text, we've discussed it, I've seen your leadership team meeting, that kind of thing. So, you know, we've been working on it internally, but to us, the actual major provisions and monetary things really made more sense to run past you before you actually went through and saw just the text.
Yeah. Now, I was just going to say, I appreciate the presentation. It was very well done, and I think it was the way to do, like, the side-by-side to get the gist of it, I think was very easy to follow. So, I think I very much appreciate it, especially given the late hour. I don't think I could have looked like a red-line version of our old code. The one area that, I'll say, I just, for me, everything looks in line. The one area I just had a bit of a pause was, I think it was an earlier slide about who has sign off, and the city manager designee can approve purchases less than $30,000. I think I would want that spelled out a little bit more, just in terms of, you know, obviously, I'm fine with the deputy city manager. Once we get to having a lot of people who could possibly be a designee, that makes me a little nervous.
I appreciate that, and so we can specify that. The way that it currently, the way that it works is that actually, either Jason or I look at every single one of these things, too. So, there's, it's not just the discretion of a department head.
Yeah. So, but other than that, that was the only thing that actually gave me a bit of pause. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I agree with the mayor that the presentation was good, and I liked the side-by-side so we could compare and see exactly what it is that you're talking about. I assume that a copy of this presentation will be available to us, because it's not in the handout. I'll also say that I'm kind of disappointed that we get this at 10:30 at night with no material ahead of time, and then we're expected to give opinions about it at this time of night, and I'm not prepared to do that.
Okay. All of this information is included in the cover sheet. It's just in a different format in the presentation. I'll be sure you get a copy of the presentation as well.
Presentation was a good way to present. Thank you. But, you know, I would like to see a work session after this and not where we could, you know, give feedback on the suggestions. I also appreciate the fact that you've, you know, brought this to us. You know, it's an area that hasn't been revised, like you said, for as long as I've been on the council. And I think that's important. I'm not ready, I'm unenthusiastic about some of your suggestions in here, but I'd like to go through and give it some thought and be prepared to talk about it in the, in a work session in the future. I just had one question on the presentation. That was the administrative regulations. Do those require council approval?
They go through the regular process, and if council wants to actually take action on them, they can say they'd like to take action on them. That's our standard process with admin regs.
Okay. You said it goes through the regular process?
So, the regular process includes putting them out in the newsletter, having them out for kind of review for a while. If the council wants to discuss them at a council meeting and take action on them, they can. There's an opportunity for them to do that choice. So, there's several different ways to weigh in, and you could very well have it as part of your process.
It requires council action, though, to get it on the agenda?
Well, it doesn't require council action, but you can require council action.
Okay.
If the council does nothing, the regulations would, you know, would be adopted.
And the way we would know about it is through the public notification?
Yeah, they get a copy.
You get a copy. I mean, you're.
Do we normally get a copy?
Yes, you normally get a copy.
When was the last time?
The sidewalk campaign.
Sidewalk campaign.
Sidewalk campaign, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And I think we can add, just, we can get the city clerk, so you don't forget this, a work session on the seventh and still keep the fourteenth.
It's easy for you, so you're not going to be here.
You're going to call in. It's going to be a lot of fun. All right. Councilmember Cersei, sorry, it's got a tiny, very.
Thank you so much for this presentation. It's really helpful. The format was really good, and there's some aspects of the presentation that, or the pain points that I know very, very well, when you're purchasing packed, you know, IT software that typically runs about $15,000, and you don't want to have to go through 35,000 hoops every year for this contract. So, I get it. I agree with the mayor in terms of, I actually think that the threshold of $30,000 for, you know, I guess that third bullet on the screen that's here, in terms of the city manager's designee, I kind of think that's a little high. You know, I would, I would kind of lean more towards 10K, primarily because that then takes, you're not in the business of having to deal with, like, typical supply orders, paper, pens, that kind of thing. But once you get over 10, then you're usually doing something related to a program or some kind of project, and it's better to just make sure that there's some sign off there. The idea of the multi-term, you know, just having experienced it, I, it's a lovely thing, but it is also a case where having those market analysis and kind of doing those price checks and getting those quotes become more important, because over time, you just get in the habit of signing off that you, if you don't have that extra check, you can find yourself way overpaying, because it's just easier to auto-renew. So, I would, I would actually think about ways in which, you know, with a multi-term, which I, you know, makes sense, it totally makes sense, but maybe thinking through when you're divide, you know, developing the administrative requirements, to make sure that that market surveillance piece is included. I'm trying to remember if anything else immediately jumped out. I think that's all I have at 10:55, but, you know, if I have this, I'll take a more detailed look and share any thoughts.
Sure, yeah, I'll send it to you tonight.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I just want to first say thank you for doing this. I always like to see it when we're updating our policies. I would like to associate myself with the mayor and council member Cersei's comments about the threshold. I think that makes sense. My question regarding what other people in the region, what their threshold is, how, is there a formula that you get to this amount, like a standardized ICMA? You know, if your budget is, you know, it's a 3%, what?
That's a, that's a good question. I'm not sure what ICMA would say, but they would probably say the city manager should be able to approve everything.
Well, I guess we can go home now.
But it's a really good and interesting question that you posed, and another approach that we could potentially take. The only organization that I know of who uses a formula approach is actually Mount Rainier, and their, and their formula approach is $3,500. The manager, the manager has the authority to approve purchases for $3,500 to every million dollars in their general fund budget. So, their general fund budget was something just shy of $7 million, and that's why they're, they've got that kind of weird number, the $23,530.
And I mean, that's brand new, so we haven't.
Use your mic.
That ordinance is brand new, so, you know, we haven't seen how it worked. In fact, my only kind of concern about it is you've got these odd numbers that change every year, and then, you know, people don't know what the threshold is.
So, one of the things that we had talked about was, does it make sense to have some kind of a formula that when you get to the next 5,000, you move it up or something? To me, it needs to, it's really helpful to, like, have a number that staff is just really familiar with and whatever. I don't, I mean, I don't want to wait another 25 years to bump it up, but I, but I do think that it's helpful to have a really easy-to-remember number as we go through the processes.
And was the number based on, like, some of your cost practices, like, lower-tier things, paper orders, you don't want to have to go through, but things, most of your big, major contracts are probably 30 and above?
Most, most of the things that we get in, there's, I think, this is just anecdotally, we didn't spend a lot of time doing this study, but we have lots of things that are like $28,000. And then you bump up to garbage trucks or really, like, much larger purchases. And so, if we had picked 30,000 or 35,000, I think we'd be bumping up against it really fast with a bunch of things, so that's why we went to 50. But, but that seems like somewhere in that 30 to 50 is where that cutoff point is between some standard things that are in the budget that are more routine kinds of purchases versus larger ticket items or more complex projects.
Yes, I'm done. I'm sorry. Councilmember Devol.
Yeah, well, that was one of my questions, was why 50 and not 35 or 40? Because it gives me a little discomfort, and one of the reasons it does is because being a new council member and not able to, having not known I was supposed to ask all these questions about what was in different departmental budgets, the only way I know what's in them is when it comes through. So, I completely agree that the current system is, $10,000 is crazy, but I wonder whether 50 might be a little high. So, that's, that's my thinking right now, and maybe there's another way to give council the information, and it might even be more useful earlier on in the process, rather than after it's in the budget and then suddenly we find out that in the budget there were. after it's in the budget and then suddenly we find out that in the budget there, well, I find out that there was in the budget X amount for this particular item and we're being asked to approve it.
Right.
So, that's just something to think about.
I think that one of the things that was really clear to me in talking with even some council members about this subject, kind of miscellaneous times, is that there hasn't been real transparency about our purchases to you in a, it's a hit or miss thing as to what comes to you before council meetings. And so, to me, it makes more sense to figure out some standard reporting that you see kind of, oh, these are some of the stand, these are some of the standard approvals over X amount of $10,000 or whatever, just so that you get like a regular report and you can start to see trends and you can, you can start to get some of that comfort level because if I were in your shoes, I'd want to see it. And so, so that was part of our discussion when we were looking at this is that especially if we move this number up, how do we also provide you with that set of eyes?
And my other comment for this hour is you had asked me to take a look at the environmental purchasing specifically and I, because I was involved in writing it in the first place and so I will. But I don't in concept see any problem with moving a lot of that to the administrative regulations. At the time, that wasn't really an option, but now it is.
And I'm not even sure anything substantively would change. It would just move from the code to regulations.
Right, but I, but I said I would look and I will.
Yeah, and to give an example on that, when looking through the code, it is EPA, this version, this number, this, you know, it's a whole series of things. And my first thought in looking at it again was, well, the EPA could just get rid of all these, you know? Or they could gut these regs and that, that undercuts our point. Or there may be new, and there are some new logos or other kind of categories that show sustainable purchasing practices. And so, to be able to be reflective of those changing, that changing technology and those, those different methods of saying this is a good product.
Great. Councilwoman Kostic.
I just want to reiterate my thanks for the presentation. It's helpful to see it in this format. And I agree with most of the comments that have been made regarding some of the thresholds and the specific designation by the city manager. What I wanted to suggest is I agree with the idea of moving the environmental regulations or by environmental aspects to the admin regulations. I also think we should explore adding some aspects to the admin regulations that look at socially responsible procurement. It's late, I can't talk at all right now, as well. So, looking at purchasing from places that pay a fair wage, purchasing from minority and women and disabled owned businesses, those sorts of things. If there are ways that we can build those in, in addition to the environmental considerations, I think that would really be beneficial.
Yeah, and we have some of those actually in other parts too of the, so it's a good thing to look at.
Thanks. Councilmember Kovar.
I'll be brief, thank you. Thanks for putting this forward. I think we clearly need to update it. Just a couple of questions and comments. Is one reason for wanting to raise the numbers, I don't think as a, as a council member, I found it burdensome to periodically have to vote on these things. We generally approve them without much effort, but is it burdensome for the staff? I mean, I guess that's what you're saying. In addition, in addition to.
Oh, yeah. It's a pain in the butt to prepare these.
So, it's that as well as not being able to take advantage of these sales and things like that.
And Suzie, the city manager, I couldn't think of a time where you didn't approve something.
Right.
So, yeah.
I think you might ask a question.
Yeah, yeah. I, in looking at the thresholds, I mean, I sort of thought 30 was great. I wasn't exactly sure on 50, you sort of explained that, that would be the one that I would wonder about. And maybe there's a way that there's a distinction whether it's in the budget or not in the budget. Maybe that does address it because if it's something that's in the budget and we've already sort of agreed on it, maybe that.
If it's not in the budget, it has to come through a budget amendment in any event. So, it has to come to you somehow.
Right, okay. So, even the 30 versus 50, I wonder, 30 seems like a number that sort of works. You made a case for 50 and I guess that's okay. And the other option would be to notify us, maybe if it was, if it was close to 50 or in some way notify us more quickly than just in an annual or quarterly report. I don't know if, I don't know if that would work. Is there anything that in generally accepted accounting practices, there's any sort of concern with that or as long as we have good controls, it's okay? You know, the work that Susan Chung does, for example?
We, we follow the generally accepted accounting practices really carefully and so we have multiple looks at, at these various things and, and, you know, we routinely question even different recommendations, so.
But raising these numbers like this wouldn't, wouldn't run afoul of it?
No, the only thing is to be transparent about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, bring this back as a work session. You'll circulate the PowerPoint and then we'll do another work session and then bring it for a first vote on the 14th.
Thank you.
Great. Our last item tonight is the item that was pulled from the consent agenda. It is the resolution looking at the Tacoma Park Youth Council. There are two things that I wanted to bring forward to consider. One was in thinking about the youth council. As we know, this is the very first year and things have gone very well. But we want to consider how young people are appointed to the council and so one thing that I have brought before you is a consideration of allowing up to 11 participants to the youth council to be appointed, to continue with our minimum of nine, but we could have upwards of 11. That we keep the one youth appointed from each ward, but remove the limit of no more than two. One, it was very confusing. But in addition, I wanted to add that, that we would actively recruit and appoint members from traditionally underrepresented wards, that means across our city committees, which are wards four, five, and six. In addition, I added language, again, looking at our racial equity work that wards four, five, and six are also our wards that have the greatest percentage of residents of color. And so, thinking about it in that respect of hopefully increasing participation of young people in wards four, five, and six and allowing us to appoint up to 11. The other thing that the youth council itself has asked, and that's not reflected in the red line version you have in front of you, but when we take this up again, is to change the term from them being appointed, which would be more akin to, more aligned with the school year. So, be appointed in September and end their term in August. And so, those are the, the two things before you this evening for consideration. And we can bring it back again then for a vote and a vote on, we do still have to select the young people and Ward Four has no one. So.
Joyce has said she can't do it.
Okay. Council, I'll say, Councilmember DiBala.
I think this is, I think this, these are good changes.
Okay. Councilmember Kovar.
Just one question. So, it says we're going to actively recruit and appoint members from the traditionally underrepresented wards, but what if we don't succeed too well in that? And we've struck the language about having one member from each ward?
No, it's still there, the language. Sorry, did I make a mistake?
Crossed out.
No, it was supposed, that was supposed, one, at least one member from each ward.
And, okay, striking the, but not more than two.
Right.
Okay. But the rest of the sentence stays in.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
So, keep the requirement that we have one per ward.
Oh, okay.
So, basically, this time around, if we don't have Ward Four, we, we appoint 10 and we are holding a place for someone from Ward Four.
Okay, as long as the part about at least one member per ward is kept, then I'm, then I'm fine.
That was my clerical error.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
But striking the no more than two. So, for example, right now, we have three applicants from Ward Six. So, if they meet all the requirements and everything, this would allow all three of them to be forward.
I'm with it.
Okay, good.
No.
No, no.
It's good, it's good.
It was a little complicated. Councilmember Cersei.
Thank you. And good night. It was so hard. I, I. I know, you're sorry, I didn't send my email fast enough. I was like, oh. So, no, I think, I think this is a wonderful step forward. I mean, you know, it's so important to not only be able to engage, have youth that are engaged, but to, to give all an opportunity to really help specifically in those areas where we need more youth champions, you know? So, I'm really excited about the changes and the fact I don't have to keep doing the math around, one, no more than two, but less than five. It was just too much, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for the proposal. I think it should help with, with the youth council. My question is, what non-traditional recruit, recruitment methods will be employed for Ward Four, Five, and Six? And do we reach out to the schools and, and, you know, student councils and, and ask, you know, those organizations if, you know, their membership would like to be a part of the youth council?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Yeah.
I was, I was remembering councilmember Cersei's early morning bus stop runs with donuts and coffee. That could work.
It was actually candy.
Darn, it's good I didn't get up for the donuts.
Middle schoolers aren't too keen on coffee.
But they'll take a donut.
All right, all right. Well, with that then, I think this will come back to us. Our work here is not done though. I want to say that we still have needed to make a choice. So, regarding the applicants, because if we keep one seat open for a ward, for a person, we still have more applicants in positions. So, we do need to, yes, councilwoman, oh, I got two now. Councilwoman Kostic and then DiBala.
No, I just wanted to note that I do think it's important for us to think about age as well as ward representation on the council because we do have a large number of people in the older grades who seem to be interested. And for us to try to encourage more, more people from the younger grades to try to apply and try to bridge that gap, I think there's a value in having several members from lower grades if possible so that we can kind of balance that out and nobody feels kind of left out and lost in this group with a bunch of high schoolers if they're only in seventh grade or eighth grade.
Great. Councilmember DiBala.
I was just going to confess that there were four applicants from Ward Two.
I know.
Two are already on the council, one is in seventh grade and then there's the other one. All of whom are very qualified, I might add, otherwise.
Okay, well, you have some.
That's part of the problem.
Yeah. So, all right, well, 11, almost 11:15. Good work tonight, thank you everyone. Next week is off, so have a good time and congratulations on LED lights tonight. That was some good work the last couple of weeks, so thank you. And, oh yeah, we have Monday. We do. But Monday, Monday, Monday's going to be a fun day. It's going to be, it's, I know, it is, housing, it's, I'm excited about all the work the staff is doing, so, good night everyone.